I can't.
I know.
Alright.
I'm being welcomed.
What?
You know, I'm super happy to be there and I want to look good. That's all we're shooting.
I was just turning, I'm like, what is...
I'll do the fast one.
I might actually work it out.
I just can't. What I think is just like... I mean, you got it. I just need to reduce. When I hear work, I just...
Alright, we'll go ahead and get started. Get this meeting fell to order. Alright, so, uh, we're here for our special meeting requested by the Commission, the City Commission, uh, to discuss how to spend marijuana funds for projects. Um, that's strictly what this meeting is for. Uh, we'll open up the meeting here in a second for, uh, other comments. I just wanna briefly go over the back of the agenda. I'll go over more under business. Just so you're aware, the first section of bullet points is the current projects that the Parks and Rec Department are working on. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget extends to June thirtieth. You see, I got them all listed there. Um, some say completed, some say they're working on them, some say when we're gonna work on them. Um, some of them aren't as fun as others, but I just put them all in there so you know what we're doing this year. Then the second group of bullet points talks about, we just turned in our CIP improvement plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which starts July one. Those are the, those bullet points and projects that we're proposing to the City Commission, um, that we would like to do. Um, typically, we have a number associated with them and how we're paying for them. I did not put all that information in there. Uh, it's really not that important for you guys. But those are the ideas that we have for this upcoming budget. Sometimes they're approved, sometimes they're not, sometimes we push them to the following year. But that's what we're going to, um, to our budget meetings and potentially to the City Commission for approval. Um, and then the bottom part, which I forgot to put on there, are the survey results that the Commission or the DDA put out about how to spend the money. Three topics, correct me if I'm wrong, other commissioners. Um, the three topics in that menu order, Pump Track, Disc Golf Course, Downtown Splash Pad. Were those the top three?
Yes.
Okay. So that's just a brief, uh, understanding of what we're gonna be talking about tonight and what we have plans for the future. So we'll go ahead and, uh, start with public comments. Keep in mind, the main, the main reason for this meeting is to discuss how, give, give feedback or ideas to the Commission on how to spend the money. Um, and hopefully, we have a nice list to give to them. We have a few City Commissioners in here, so everyone will be, um, in the loop, probably at our next Commission meeting, I'm assuming. Um, it's one of the talks about, I've not heard exactly when that would be yet, but I'm assuming one of the next two meetings. Um, probably in February. So we'll go ahead and get started. I guess, um, we'll start with whoever, um, wants to speak first, to say your name and any ideas you have for us. And try to keep, you know, it's two, three minutes, um, and then we'll get to our business. We have one presentation and then we'll talk amongst ourselves up here about project ideas and hopefully formulate the list to give to the Commission. So, amongst ourselves.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Dean Mast. Uh, so I would like to, I have a presentation that I can talk through, um, later. Uh, I'm gonna be talking about bringing potentially two disc golf courses to the City of Lapeer. Um, I have a lot of data, um, financial gains for the city that comes from it, potential for it. Brent Gass, here, is the President and founder of the Bubba Park Disc Golf Club. Um, he has helped and worked with, uh, the Goldenrod Disc Golf Course out of Richmond Township and helped them get permanent tee pads and improve that course up to a championship level course. Um, and then the eventual goal, uh, in the long run with Goldenrod in Richmond Township and then Lee Otisville, Otisville is Hunts Hideaway, which is the number four course in the state of Michigan. We want this, one of the courses that we put into Lapeer to be the third component of that, which then will make us eligible to put in a bid to have a state championship come to this area. So you're talking about, you know, potential thousands of guests overnight stays, lots of, you know, bringing a lot of business into the area, um, and just kinda, you know, making a mark over here in terms of...
And else?
Good evening. Uh, Chris Turner, uh, founder of Great For Cause, um, doing a couple different events in town. Um, here in support of, hopefully, um, looking at the Pump Track and what that can do, uh, for not just the city, but the county. Um, and for the kids. Um, I think, uh, the Pump Track is, you know, it's, uh, it's a wonderful thing. It's something that all age groups can use. Um, it'll be a multi-use, um, not just for bicycles. Obviously, I'm a big bicycle component, but I just bought the building in, in the independent bank, by a client of fitness. When I come in and out of there every single night, working on the building, all I hear next door is skateboarders clapping in the parking lot. And it could be until midnight, one o'clock in, in, you know, in the morning. Um, so there's a lot of kids out there that, you know, if we can try to get this Pump Track foot in, the bicycles, the BMXers, the skateboarders, the rollerbladers, that right now currently have nowhere to really go other than someone's private parking lot. Um, you know, I think that Pump Track is, is, is something that will widely be used, especially for kids that may not be into a team sport, but needs something to excel in, um, and give them something to do, uh, that is healthy. Um, and what's nice about the Pump Track with the multi-use, these kids that may be out doing things in the middle of the night on their own, if they can start mingling with peers that support, volunteer in the community and whatnot, and help take care of that Pump Track, maybe we can start, uh, training or molding these youngsters into future volunteers for the Pump Track, for the trail systems, for the City of Lapeer. Um, I just think a lot of these young kids need, um, need some, need some, uh, some adults who can vision even when they're having fun. So, the Pump Track, I think, is just a great, wonderful thing to add to the community. Um, with just the rumor of it, uh, I know that being Great For A Cause, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Like, is it gonna happen? What a great thing. So, I kinda have that backstory where my ear gets chewed quite a bit, where a lot of you folks, you know, a lot of people appear me now. But I think it's gonna be a great thing, that's, that's what you said.
Hi, my name is Brent Gass, I'm the President, CEO, owner of the Bubba Park Disc Golf. Uh, I'm just here on behalf of Disc Golf and kind of some of the benefits that we've had with other municipalities and parks departments. Right now, we're working with the DNR, um, like, re- reported properties, and they're coming to us at this point as some of these other courses are installed and upgraded, about the increased usage, the decrease in crime in some of the parks and how low maintenance is. Once you put in a six-foot by total concrete pad, you know, and eighteen baskets, it's pretty, you know, you're emptying garbage and mowing property that probably wouldn't have been mowed anyways. So there's a lot of situations where we have dual use, we have a full, like, high-quality disc golf course, where you still have trails, you still have, you know, other uses for the park. But we've talked about Lapeer, you guys have property and, you know, a lot of hills and a lot of interesting things where we think would be created and put into really good courses that could go from the top players in the world, because we have two of the largest manufacturers for disc golf in the state, all the way down to six and seven-year-olds or eight-year-olds that are able to come out there and play on the same property with different tee pads and different baskets, so. But our proposal covers all of this. Thank you.
Alright, uh, my name is, uh, Jeffrey Bonstil. I'm, uh, here to support, uh, the Pump Track. I grew up here in Lapeer all my life. Used to get trouble all the time, riding my biking town. Used to hang out over there, uh, each night at a lot, be inside the town, these guys jumps over there all the time. And, uh, but it was a place where we used to ride. And, uh, like Chris said, just not really to play sports. And, uh, the kids these days, skateboarding, scooters, it's just a huge thing for extreme sports now. It's just blowing up, it's crazy. So, um, and I'm a volunteer out there at the Oakdale Trails. And that thing is just, it's amazing what it's done in the last three years. I meet a lot of people there, uh, from all over the place. Uh, once a day I ride, and you start that tilted axis. A ton of people come out of town, like, just riding in that thing. And then I go there on a Sunday morning, the parking lot, it's just people from all over, uh, over the county. Even from Claire, even from Instalanti sometimes, Sterling Heights, it's crazy. All these people that are coming to ride these trails. So, and everybody's going, "Oh, I heard you might have Pump Track and all this other stuff." And then I met one guy, he does YouTube videos, and he made a video out there of the new Pump Track that we just built. And everybody's just like, making comments on it. It's just, it's really awesome how this is a great biking community that I think a lot of people didn't even know that we had. So, I think it's just, uh, it'd be great for our community and, you know, it's, gives me something. Because you really don't have anything else besides, like, team sports or school sports or something like that, so. It's just something that you can do by themselves or bring your buddies and have a good time, so. It's just my little input, so thanks.
And else?
Yeah, Joshua Atwood. Last couple of these meetings I've been to, I always speak up on ecotourism and, um, obviously teenagers. We, we do a lot in this community for adults and, and the younger kids, uh, but teenagers, uh, seem to be bypassed a lot, not on accident. Uh, but stuff like a Pump Track, um, would, would come in handy with it, well, it, it covers a large, with what they wanna do. It covers a large age gap and includes a lot of different things, not just skateboarding and, uh, skaters, uh, BMX season. You could ride anything on these, uh, Pump Tracks. Um, so I think it's, it's very important, and, and one thing I would recommend is if we get these, um, pro, these two projects in the CIP. Uh, and that way, you know, if, if the, if the City of Lapeer, if the residents want it, if Lapeer County wants it, they will help raise the funds and they will help get these, um, projects accomplished. If, if we get in the CIP, that gives us some direction and, uh, it also gives, uh, the community some direction on, on what we wanna do and what we wanna accomplish and, uh, what we can do together. Kinda like the Dog Park and how we accomplish that together, um, as a city and as any community, so. I'm always here to speak up on ecotourism. I think it's a huge, uh, financial benefit to our city. You see that with Oakdale Trails. Um, kayaking is also one of those sports I, I like to talk about a lot too, so. That's all. My lines.
Anyone else?
So, I raised four boys here and, um, at least one of them used to carry around the ordinance for skateboards in his pocket because he would literally get in trouble by some police officer nearly every day or twice. Um, they got run off from everywhere they went to try to go do those things. They wanna jump on their bikes, their boys, their kids, they, that's, those are things they do. It was really hard for them to do those things. I was a weird mom who kicked them outside. You, "Oh, look, it's nice out, goodbye." You go outside, find something to do, build a fort in the backyard, go play in the woods, we have plenty of woods around town. I agree with everything you're about to hear from Mr. McCready and from these three gentlemen as well, of course. And as far as disc golf goes, um, I know one of the things that I've heard was they're, well, they're making one at Torzuski, but city kids can't walk to Torzuski. We want something our community communities hear, not that they have to get in the car with their mom to drive them there. And, um, you have to have, you know, it's a different price point than, you need a bike, you need a skateboard, you need a scooter. You need a five-dollar frisbee thing from Walmart to be able to play disc golf, not a bike. We have wonderful, wonderful, um, charity in this town. Every kid that wants a bike or needs a bike should definitely have one. These riders make sure of that. They give away an awful lot. So that's not a huge barrier, but if your bike breaks, you might not be able to go get a new one, but it's a lot easier to get a five-dollar disc at Walmart. But the Pump Track and the, the trails have been a wonderful thing. My kids have been part of that for, since before it was a trail and we were out there weed planting, you know? And just riding Lapeer. I'm in favor of both of these things and enjoying it through trail.
You guys first.
She's...
Last one, last one, you gotta say something.
I can say something.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Chase Sessing. Um, I think that disc golf would be a great addition to the community. Like you saying, it is a cheap thing that you can get into and it's easy. I have very little skill level, but even I can, like, go out and do disc golf. It's a great way to bond with people in your community. He goes out all the time and meets new friends out on the disc golf course. Um, and then it's a great way to just bond with friends that you have in an easy way that doesn't take a ton of skill, so it's a great way to kinda bring the community together in a way that isn't expensive and doesn't require a ton of tail or expertise to do. So I think it would be a great addition to the community.
We have to move into your business and then we can deliver it between...
Okay.
Those topics.
Okay.
So, can we ask a question with the experts, I guess?
I'm here as a work, if it's a workshop, yeah?
Yeah.
I would say, you know, what is?
We can decide, right? It's our rules.
So, I'm Brian, head of the Superintendent of Parks, and I would say on both areas of interest that I am very excited, a renewed excitement as long as I've been here, you know, twenty-eight years, of the new exciting things we have with the mountain biking opportunities, the running, the hiking. I enjoy them as much as I can at lunch, just to be able to get out in our backyard and, and do that stuff right here in our city. Uh, and all the people and all the stuff that has grown so fast, it seems, out there with Parris and Friends and Open Day and Yancy. The great job and the bike shops coming in is just another bonus. And the opportunity for disc golf, which is not as, you know, familiar as the activities out of Parris and Friends, but certainly interesting and it seems low cost. Um, for both things, I guess, I don't know, like, we have as close as Jack Abernathy Park, just kind of a makeshift structure skate area, uh, for the kids. Um, and then what is the difference of, like, Richfield Township? Of that was formerly a BMX park, is it more of a Pump Track now?
Um, the, the presentation that I have will answer a lot of these questions, especially what it is. But the BMX track serves one user group, BMX riders, and is built specifically for that. It's a remarkable situation that they have over there, um, in terms of participation of these young athletes. But it is a single-use item and that is the main, um, distinction between a Pump Track, which Chris made a point, is like the trail, multi-use and, and that will certainly be answered. And hopefully, all the rest of the questions will be answered in the presentation, which is the point of putting that together, but...
Driving through there, at one point, I thought I saw some pavement, hill, pavement.
Some of their approaches, some of the starting, has been somewhat recently, um, paved with asphalt. And their surface is also a combination of clay and aggregate that basically they wax. They put a, a sealant on it, um, it repels water. It's super fine for durability purposes and for grip. So, it's basically mimicking asphalt, is the point.
Yeah, so I am definitely in favor of your ideas and it's absolutely on the, uh, the disc golf. I just get concerned with, with so many activities and user groups in the parks and open space that we have remaining of how much area, you know, how many holes, how much area would we acquire and how would you, you know, mix that? Because it's come up at least four times over the past twenty years, the incorporation of disc golf. And it's always been interesting, it's been kind of a low-cost endeavor. Uh, when we had the mock property near Chatfield, that was open space and that's gone by the wayside now, so, uh, towards the law. But there's, I'm just interested in both for sure, I just have, I guess, certain questions of where both areas would be placed and, and use with the other user group.
I know that disc golf can be pretty, uh, flexible as far as, if trails or other things going on in the property, uh, like, certain ways that people throw a disc, you can kind of, like, mimic and, uh, like, build a scale. Think, so they're not throwing the bike towards trails. There's hundreds of courses I miss now that weren't here ten years ago. I think we've had, but went toppled in the last three years of, like, competitive and more professional approaches to disc golf, so.
Yeah, with the YMCA and Flushing has their walking trail, um, I think it's a park, uh, I believe, but similar to one of the parks up, the one number by the water tower, similar to that kind of thing. And they just have a disc golf course that's digging through that, right? So like, I mean, in the planning phase, if you're planning for that, right? You don't want those two things to enter next, right? You wanna maximize the space. Um, so there's good examples of that around and that would all be, before anything goes in the ground, those are gonna be the thoughts and the things that are happening, whether it's mandatory, how you're pointing them in a certain direction, et cetera, right? Um, I think the metro parks and a lot of the, like, you know, the southern areas of the state are great examples of that. There's not a single metro park that doesn't have mountain biking trails, have disc golf courses, have everything, right? A lot of them, a lot of the times, I mean, you're talking about, the trail might be going right, I, I'm thinking of, um, Tannenbaum right now, but they have trails right, right going past where one of the baskets is at. They have, they plant some bushes to kinda get a natural barrier there, right? But helping those two things to, you know, those two things to go with this with each other. So that, you know, the, you guys can maximize the space, but you're kinda catering to the means of everything, so.
So both ideas are laid out by professional designers, things like that, all those things taken into consideration. Because when I throw a frisbee, I can ask it, "Is this a golf ball?" So, I can't control...
I like my golf ball.
Sure, I can't control someone's walking down the path. And I guess all users would be different levels of expertise or ability, so, yeah.
Exactly. I mean, that's signage, directions, like I said, mandatories, how you're pointing them to, just trying to plan for that at a time, right? I mean, if someone accidentally throws it directly behind them, I don't, we can't plan for that. And I, I can't help with that, right? But like, helping it point that direction to, if you can avoid that, so.
Thank you. I was just gonna add to you, the original park too, that's basically made for, made for, like, racing. So, you have like a starting gate and then you've got it all certain way, you know? Um, so, it's just basically, that's all it's made for, it's nothing like, you can't go around the other way, you know? You can't go your way, stuff like that. So, it's just one thing. So, the Pump Track is gonna be that good, I guess, from the...
And I agree with, you know, as far as kids, without transportation access, for both, so, for a total understanding.
Okay, well, I think we'll move into our business. I encourage the disc golf people to stick around, because you may have some questions while we're discussing this. Um, so I guess we'll introduce Peter McCready. Uh, he's one of the driving forces around this, this project and, uh, figured we'd just, he asked if he could have some time just to kind of go over things. I think, like you said, he'll gotta answer a lot of the questions before this question. So, uh, Peter, go ahead, take it away.
I was one in the hospital down the road, know most folks here, but, uh, just a little, uh, brief background. Raised here in Lapeer. I've worked, uh, for twenty-plus years in the city at Chatfield. And, uh, during that time, had the privilege of doing a wide variety of different service, um, projects that, um, are mostly recreation-focused. Um, so, um, I really appreciate the, the effort by the Commission to put this money for projects related to quality of life. I think that's, uh, pretty key. Um, and whenever I think of that term, I jump back to Ray Turson's, uh, analogy, um, that I think is, is spot-on about the dog. The dog has four legs. The four legs are jobs, uh, schools, uh, infrastructure, which includes roads, public safety, and the dog's tail is called quality of life. Um, if the dog's tail is not waggon, um, then the other four don't matter in terms of attracting the public that's invested in their community. And one of the key indicators of quality of life that we see time and time again is access to recreation, specifically outdoor recreation, which we have seen explode, um, with the whole COVID deal. So, uh, more than ever, this is super relevant. Um, so I am representing our committee that's been working on this, um, Pump Track concept, uh, for quite a while now. And the committee consists of, of both Marlena and, and Josh here, uh, Jeff and Chris, um, Chris Babcock, Marty, Austin Kelly, who's on zoning, uh, planning, planning or zoning, one of those. He's our, uh, resident old man skater. And, uh, Joe Morning, of Austin being our age, not a punk kid like he used to be, um, still skating and that kind of thing. So, uh, and he could not be here tonight as well either. So, um, Commissioner Katayden said in the meeting during this discussion where there was some confusion about whether this was an outside group or whether this was, um, a city project. Um, he said that he believed that the Pump Track, uh, was the project that best served, uh, the public, um, because of the number of user groups. So that was his comment, which, uh, I think is, uh, is pretty valid. Um, so the point for us is to share our strategy that the committee has been working on to make this happen. Um, and that will, um, clear up some of the misconceptions about the discussion that night and how we approach this and how we fund it and how this is truly a city, um, project, not an outside group. Um, so, I, I, we, we need to know what a Pump Track is. Um, I didn't, um, I am not a person that likes to leave the ground on my bicycle. Um, skateboards make me think of broken ankles. Um, I don't rollerblade, I don't do anything on Pump Track. I've been to them, I've ridden them with my brakes on the whole way. Um, so it's not something that I personally care about for myself, but I can, uh, acknowledge the incredible athleticism that goes into these, um, into these tracks in the different ways. So, let's just take a little, uh, peek at this. Okay, so Velo Solutions is the world leader and, uh, in Pump Track design. And, um, their, um, their tracks are renowned for being custom-fit to the place. Um, so they have this design contract concept where they come into a community and work with community input and then give you a picture and then redraw the picture and then, uh, work with you on this design. And so, one of the things that we have requested, um, in our communication with them is some skater-specific features. In the same way that Oakdale Trails is a multi-use trail, we have enhanced the trail to be mountain bike-specific through some of the features and yet still it is for nature, bird, nerd-type folks, it is for trail runners. It is the home turf for our Lapeer Lightning team. They run their home races on the trail and that's certainly a point of pride. Um, so, the, um, the multi-use nature was something that we wanted to really make sure that we were addressing the needs of all these groups. And by looking at specific skater features that they put into their Pump Tracks, I think we get a better picture of that multi-use angle. I just left the music off because it's a bit much.
Which park is, which park is this?
Oh, it's over there in, uh, Latvia. Okay. I'm not joking. They are this, when you look into these guys, they're all, and you start watching their videos, they are everywhere. They are in Nigeria, they, they're everywhere. They are a dominant force with this concept. Um, the closest one in Michigan is at Heinz Park, it's on the Rouge. Um, it's small, but, um, the one time that I visited there, we, we saw all these same user groups. We saw kids on scooters... we saw all these same user groups. We saw kids on scooters. We saw BMX. We saw the skaters. We saw, and then a bunch of old guys on mountain bikes that looked really awkward. Um, so it was kind of cool to go visit our only local, uh, pump track and, and see instantly, there's moms sitting in the car watching the kids and all these user groups. So that just gives us a, a sense of, of what this, uh, looks like. Um, so multi-use, uh, we, we listed those groups. Um, and that's a distinction between something like, uh, disc golf or, or pickleball. Now, I'm very pro both of them. I want both of them in this community. We had many conversations with Ray about that, um, that Mott property before they bought it. We had looked into T costs. We, we had some layout. Um, I was part of the first disc golf course here at Camp Lael over twenty years ago. Um, we built that course. It's private. It's at a camp, a kids camp, but thousands of people have played that over the years. Um, it's, it's an incredible thing, but it's disc golf people. You know, it's, that's the distinction here is by putting in a pump track, you get the four, five for one sort of bang for your buck out of user groups. Um, and, and the same is true with, um, with pickleball. We've seen these, these things grow astronomically in our time. And, um, that's pretty exciting to consider. Um, Tony, you made the point in the meeting about the growth trends of, of both pickleball and disc golf. Um, I remember when we were talking the same thing about soccer. Um, I was on the first high school soccer team in Lapeer. I did reffing for the parks when we were still at Birdland and playing on the field at Zimmer. So we saw the soccer thing explode. And then we said, wow, somebody's got this thing called a kayak. And all of a sudden kayaks were paddle sports were passing soccer in this country. And now when you ask a hundred kids who's been in a canoe, canoe, they've all, our generation was in a canoe first, their generation has been in a kayak first. And now we're seeing the whole new thing, stand-up paddle boards, uh, even on rivers, which is fantastic. So there is no doubt that all of these things are growing in a huge way. And we've been able to fairly well, like with the bicycling community, we've been able to keep up pretty well for our, our hot little town here. So, um, just to think about the involvement of the park board, many of these initiatives have either involved or not involved the park board. They have not always been a vision of the park board. And in this case, we're seeing like the dog park, uh, a group of citizens who said, here's what we want. And they go to the city and have a liaison. In the case of the dog park, it was Rodney. And, um, they raise the money and use all these funding sources and MEDC match and, um, and make it happen as a city initiative. And, um, in, in the case, you know, we saw this with the Optimist Tennis Courts, which I played on them before they were the tennis courts. I was on the worst tennis team in the history of Lapeer with the state champion coach, Robin Capron. Um, the soccer field, we saw the same thing, a city parks partnership with the Optimists and with the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund, uh, is a major source of funding. So that was a game changer. Um, Prairies and Ponds started, you remember with a citizen committee, which I was a part of. And, um, Bob and Lou Myers saying, we're going to slap a hundred thousand dollars on the table here. And everyone said, wow, Matt Modrack led the charge, our city planner at the time, citizens committee, working with a city liaison, raised the money, watershed initiative network, Ducks Unlimited. And boom, we have a different kind of park, a different kind of character of park, uh, which all three of those Oakdale parks are, are based on a different sort of principle of being access to nature, uh, different than a typical sort of mowed park with, uh, traditional recreation. Um, that developed into Farmer's Creek. That was the next, uh, phase of the three phases identified, um, through the Farmer's Creek thing is where we ended up with, again, another citizens committee, this time Jan Manning from Lapeer County Community Foundation. Um, and ended up with this massive ADA grant for universal access to nature with three ecosystems and all that, uh, pavement and floating T docks and, uh, a new pavilion. Um, that was all again led by assistance committee, uh, working with the city on city land to create that opportunity. Um, and through that, we ended up with the very first landing on what eventually became right at the end of the Trump era, the, um, Flint River National Water Trail. We have been responsible, our Flint River Group here in Lapeer, our chapter of the Watershed Coalition, working in partnership with the city, with our MOU that we have with the city for maintaining the waterway. We have been responsible for three landings. Nobody in the entire watershed from here to Montrose has come close to that, uh, contributing that much in, in that amount of time. And so you can see on this, uh, map, of course, over on the left, we have the funders, again, Lapeer County Community Foundation. This was their largest grant that they have ever given for the, the landing that we just completed that Saginaw Street. And that is a recreation, an outdoor recreation initiative. Uh, so they acknowledged the economics of it. They acknowledged the, um, the people in the city from the landing that we also developed at Rotary Park. That stretch from Rotary Saginaw is still by far the most used stretch in the entire watershed. Um, so that came about, you see the other thing there on the left right below Timmergate, that's MEDC. So once again, we got that MEDC matching grant fund as a, as a funding source. And again, watershed initiative network, you see their logo. They were a funder, just like they were with ponds and prairies because we're part of the Saginaw Bay watershed. Uh, Oakdale Trails, same thing. Um, Dale soliciting input from the community about, uh, Oakdale. And, um, the next thing you know, we've got, uh, nonprofits jumping in, we've got bike races, uh, praying for a cause. We've got, um, all kinds of action, including the cross-country team. In a different model, and this is really a distinct, uh, situation because this is called user pay. And the user pay is that the agreement was that we maintain the system. We have thousands of hours maintaining this system with volunteers. We did not create this. This is a model that's being used all over the state. A municipality, a land conservancy designates the land, and then the user group maintains, raises funds, provides access. We just copied the same exact model. And that is part of the reason that the, the bicycling thing also has shown an explosive amount of growth. So the Oakdale Trail system, um, has really been a different model in that community involvement and volunteer thing. In the same way that the, um, the water trail did something similar. Those log jams, while you're bathing in waist-deep poison ivy, cutting logs out of the river, um, that's volunteers that again have a track record in conjunction with the city, working with the DNR with thousands of hours of labor, maintaining a canoe pathway, ten hours of canoeing in Lapeer alone from ponds and prairies to the backwaters of the reservoir. So that model of user pay is definitely working. And then the dog park. So what we want to do is we want this body to recommend to the commission that they follow your master plan. This is right out of your master plan, which says the development of existing vacant properties and fire land should be set aside, land for active and passive recreation. So you take on used city land, uh, that in this case has very little value, uh, it's only four acres. Um, and it's adjacent to a city nature park, ponds and prairies. Um, it has a big chunk of it that is simply unbuildable. The, um, the portion there, um, if you know the property, of course, um, is, this is a huge valley. You're just not building on it. There's a dead, um, line, drain line going through there. What we call that storm sewer, Marty, or, um, and then of course we've got a water line here. And then, um, this, a pretty decent chunk, uh, the pump track footprint, we're talking, uh, about an acre. So we're talking, um, not including park, parking, we're talking about just the pump track itself, the footprint easily fitting on this property. Um, now, at one point, um, this property was discussed as a potential library site, uh, which personally I think would have been remarkable. Um, I, we know what the library folks did and what they bought and, um, and that it's very unlikely, unfortunately, uh, with the village situation, that they're going to get that kind of support and be able to move and build. Um, and they chose a, another spot that's just bigger and more high-profile and more buildable and, and all that. Um, and then, uh, Betty McCauley, uh, you know, talked some, um, some smack about, uh, this area and this area up here as a potential performing arts center, um, which, uh, we obviously elevated our game with the, with the arts, with the, with the gallery and everything that's going downtown and Stones Throw. And, and so, um, that kind of faded out, um, as well. So we've got this chunk of land that is perfect. It's on the linear path. It is directly accessible to all these neighborhood kids. And, um, it's in the right zoning. It's, it's good for about a million reasons. Um, this is also more alignment, uh, about with your master plan. Um, just a couple of highlights here from goals and objectives. Uh, we see skate parks and pump track for BMX, of course. And, and as we just discussed, there's disc golf again and pickleball. Um, so, um, this is a priority that the Parks Commission has, has established. Uh, new activities during winter months, pump tracks are four season. Now with snow on it right now, you're not going to skate on it, but for most of the winter, as we know, our winters are a little different than they used to be, um, you are in four season mode. And that's also one of the remarkable things about Oakdale Trails. With our grooming system, we are the first, one of the first in entire thumb region, certainly in Lapeer County, the first to groom trails for cross-country skiing and fat bikes. Um, these are winter user groups that did not exist, did not have a place. Um, and so not only did we gain all these traditional normal season groups, um, with the trail, but then the winter trail group is entirely different group. So, um, in terms of bang for your buck, again, the multi-use, uh, game is the, is the way to play. Um, I really like this one here, continue to partner with Lapeer Community Schools and other organizations. Well, this is, uh, partnerships with, uh, with groups like CRAMBA. That's where our MOU is through right now. This, um, this maintenance agreement, this memo of understanding with the Regional Mountain Bike Association that we're a part of, uh, to follow IMBA standards, International Mountain Bike Association standards in the way that we maintain the trail, uh, and the way that we build the trail. Um, and the same is true with the pump track and the same is true with the watershed coalition. So these other organizations, as we know, partnerships are the name of the game. It's the way things work with funding, uh, and with, with communities, the foundation of that word. Um, and again, continue to partner with local sports organizations. This is friends of the Oakdale Trail that, uh, people have stepped up to take care of their resource in just a gigantic way. Here we see rollerbladers. You saw the rollerbladers doing all that weird stuff on there, which is, uh, just way cool. Um, and then, um, the pathways, um, the, you know, this is the linear path. And then all of the, the spurs and additions to the linear path that have, that have tied the community together in a really remarkable way, uh, to all these other green spaces and canoe landings and parks and downtown and all of it. So, um, this of course fits with that since the pump track would be on, on the, um, linear path. And then, um, down in the action plan here, um, expand the diversity of recreational facilities. Diversity, um, hallelujah, there it is. So that's what we're after, uh, in terms of this recreation. Um, the economics, just to reinforce this, uh, very straightforward. Um, this is recent, uh, from the US Bureau of Economic Analysis. I think they released these in September. In Michigan, the outdoor recreation, um, in 2021, 10.8 billion to the state economy, jobs, billion in wages, five billion in wages. Um, so this is a significant factor. Um, we see a huge increase in spending, um, new participants. This is the no longer excuse exclusionary. Everyone's coming out of the, with work to participate because we got restless strain, COVID, we discovered all these new things. And now we're more recreation. Very cool. And then to look at the Michigan ranking is, uh, pretty amazing. There's hiking, that's Oakdale Trails, um, number 11 in the country. So bicycling, number 20. Snow activities, 15, which includes cross-country skiing and fat biking. Uh, and of course, when we get, uh, when we look at their table here and look at the cycling growth, which the pump track thing is a part of, um, look at this growth. Now, the key to this whole thing is not really the chart. It's this obvious statement, uh, we continue to attract destinations for travel while maintaining beautiful public lands for our residents. For our residents, that's first. We, uh, we set up our city people with all these options. This is Marlena's point about, um, we need these kids that are riding off to the trail on their BMX, they need to be able to ride their BMX to the disc golf course. Um, they just, they're just not going to be able to get out, uh, to, I mean, they're going to go there in the same way that cyclists travel around to all these other trails, in the same way that bird nerds go visit five different nature, um, centers. They're going to go to the disc golf, but the place that they have most access to is what we give them right here in the city. Um, so for our residents, but then this is Josh's eco-tourism, uh, point, we continue to attract destinations for travelers. Uh, so we've got the data. We've got the data from our public paddles with the watershed coalition about the percentage of those people that are coming in from outside Lapeer. We want them to come here. We want them to come into our downtown. We want them to spend their cash. We want them to enjoy the arts. We want them to go out to eat, um, after they've done their, their recreating. And, um, that model is worth reinforcing for sure. Um, so what is it we want you to do? Uh, these are the, the steps. Uh, we want you to basically approve this plan. We want you to designate the site, uh, which is again aligned with the master plan. Uh, we want to tune in the cost analysis, which threw a lot of people off from ROW and admittedly, just like they did with the dog park. Doug Schultz, the landscape architect who was responsible for that plan, said it is high on purpose. And when you look at the cost analysis, there are several things. That was built not knowing what site we preferred. And it had huge exaggerations for coming into basically a chunk of woods. Land clearing 10 grand alone. Um, this spot does not need to be cleared. Um, parking, they put in a hundred spaces. We need maybe 30 spaces. And of course, we need to be ADA compliant. Um, one of the most recent pump tracks that Velo Solutions built had an ADA compliant line in the pump track. That means a wheelchair on a pump track. That is a, a game changer. Um, so of course, we've got to have some pavement and sidewalk to get to the, the thing. Um, but the bulk of this does not need, we don't need a hundred spots and we don't need a hundred cave spots. When we have events like we had with Crank for a Cause, uh, with the Beaver Dash Bash, with, um, these events, each time we've gotten permission from Chatfield, from Mott and from Roland Warner to have overflow parking. This track, we are choosing to be a minimum of 10,000 square foot so that we can be UCI certified. This is the global certification that the International Olympic Committee uses. So UCI certification is when we put this out for bids, all we have to do is say, we want a UCI certified track. And just like, um, Dean and, and folks are talking about disc golf, now you create a world-class event that people are going to travel in for and again, enjoy our community, spend their money and, um, and bolster us. So in the same way, um, that qualification, um, is, is key. So the cost analysis, um, I, I think it'll drop a hundred thousand easily off of what they put on there. Um, when we look at this site and the parking and the manipulations that need to happen, of course, we're going to need, uh, some sort of engineer to create, uh, topographical maps, uh, utilities, the geo, you know, soil boarding. Um, so we can have all that done very easily. That's really standard. And then, uh, we use some of the designated marijuana funds to, um, now, which was the original intention, not to go to ROW and to come up with a cost analysis that doesn't, that's not site, site-specific and therefore very inaccurate, admittedly, on purpose to be conservative. Um, we take some of that money now and once we We take some of that money now and once we designate the site and then get them to come in with their design team and get our custom track so that we have a vision. And that's the vision that we take to the community funders to say, here's what we want, here's the people it serves, here's where it goes, here's what it looks like. Because even, Katia and I watched his little video the other day and that's like, well, what is, what is a pump track? And he's trying to explain it. And when people try to explain it to me, I'll say, what? You've got to see it. If you don't see it, it is really, really hard to explain because it is such a unique situation. So we've got the money, let's slap it down, let's get ourselves a design contract and get a vision in place. And then we want to raise funds. So we've got the New Year's money coming in. Let's designate a certain amount towards this. This is not an outside group. This is us spending city money on a city project that we know is attractive and benefits all of us. So that's an obvious ongoing source. The MEDC thing, what, we can come up with 100 grand out of that, it's a 50 grand match? Is that right, Rodney?
Yeah, 50.
It depends on the program that they're using. That changes periodically. So they have different programs that we can manage.
So a lot of research into that potential, but certainly it's worked for us well in the past with the pocket park and with the canoe landing and with the dog park. And we've got our local optimist boy in the case there. Scrambling, Nate Scrambling. So the optimists, this is Joe Moris on the project committee and Joe, obviously, has been involved. He was the one that actually made the very first call to Velo Solutions when I showed him the video. He got on the phone immediately, called the rep and said, how's this work? So we think that this could be the next sort of optimist big project after they finish their child advocacy center, I think they're working on right now. So they're very interested in this and they could also be a major funder. And of course, there's that potential for naming rights that they're very proud of and should be. So we're looking to that. The foundation, we've had these conversations with Nancy about pump tracks and recreation. And I mean, the lady goes to Wyoming and fly fishes. She's obviously hip to the recreation thing and has shown that through the canoe landing project that she's been supportive of. Tifa has been a huge, we're in the right spot. So the fact that we're Tifa three and the lack of other things to spend it on out that way has been a huge boost to our trail system in general. And then the other service organizations are obvious supporters and have been supporters all along and just obvious that we're all very fortunate, of course, to have these ridiculous contributions from each of those groups over the years for each of these projects. And then there's some skater cycling specific grants that we need to pop into and explore a little bit. So... And now I'm going to play the happy youth card here.
It's an animal's mouth.
The little kid. Come on now. Subscribe and like, just play. Is our internet working, Joshua? Oh, here we go. She is, she is one and a half. She's on a kick bike. My nephew started on a kick bike. I didn't even know what kick bike was. He's like, what is that thing? It's no pedals. He's like, this is how they learn to balance. She is fearless. She just gets ripping. He's got the camera.
It's the...
She's ripping it. This is, this is her learning to ride. She's got dad with her at first, now he comes up and helps her, but...
She's what? She needs a little...
Look at that. You're like...
She doesn't even know. Yeah, I got this on my own. I can do it myself. Yeah.
That's incredible.
And remarkable that, you know, all these other people are out there ripping around and, you know, they were just giving her tons of space.
Do you know where this one is at?
Uh, this is... Tamoco or...
It's Kelvin.
My Q and A.
Not Peter? Okay, so...
That is downtown.
So yeah, that's, that's what I've got. What kind of questions do you have?
Yeah, just real quick. I think I mentioned this before, previous movie. Now, the one in Michigan, is there only one in Michigan or is that the one that faces the...
There's one asphalt Velo Solutions in Michigan. There are several other communities that have tried. Shelby Township where Riverbend's Park is, they got a design contract over the park and said, no, we don't have the money for this. There's a Traverse City group looking at it, of course. There's somebody in the UP, I think Ishbaming. And then a group over by Lansing. So there's several other people looking into them, but we would certainly be the first. Most of our folks are not going to drive an hour and a half to the Rouge. So again, we fit that Michigan State ecotourism hour radius, people flocking in, just like they did with the jump line, like these guys.
What I was getting at was when you were looking, looked at the other one, how long has it been there and have you noticed anything? Like you see our paint drains, they get cracks in them and our tennis court just cracked up.
A very different drainage system, right? So we watched the trail, I watched specifically the trail and how they did the work over at Tons and Prairies. And maybe the quality of work in the base layer that was put down was not as substantial as we wanted because it's certainly four inches of gravel without really removing the subsoil and getting down is why there's native willow growing up through the asphalt. So this is very different, like what we did with the jump line. We went down to the clay for drainage tubes. The entire system is drained flawlessly. And then you start with the base layer and then the thickness of the asphalt. So this is a very different thing than what you're going to put for a base crushed aggregate and then asphalt on a linear path. So yes, that question is definitely something we should be asking and something that we said right away. We want asphalt for the skaters and the rollerbladers specifically versus a dirt pump track. But what is the issue with maintenance and cracking? And their answer was...
It's the way they build it.
Is the way we build it. And go ahead and check out these pump tracks around the world that are still primo. The one in Cleveland that they just put in, you can take what you just saw and they maybe would spend 5 million. It's just monstrous. But these, we saw, this is a hot thing.
I saw that you had kind of said on there that you were looking at marijuana funds as a yearly funding source. How much do you anticipate yearly would come from the marijuana funding?
I am just suggesting that the potential for us to designate a good chunk of money, I'm not saying that this should be something that we're yearly using that money for, because certainly we're going to be looking for other ideas as we complete things that are priorities, possibly and hopefully beyond recreation. So I'm saying that what we have now and based on what our top choices are, disc golf and a pump track and the relative low cost of disc golf, we've got a pretty good chunk of change right now that could start this off and provide matching funds, knowing that it is not going away, that it's a city initiative and therefore we can spend it. So before the hesitation was, we don't know if we can spend this. So I'm not saying that we're going to need yearly. I don't think, I think those other funding sources are going to be significant and that, I don't know, maybe we get 200, 300. Who knows what? We don't really know what's coming in and what is it, April or May or this year's funds?
April, we'd have to check.
So it's not something necessarily we can always count on and not something that we're going to be thinking long-term about a revenue stream. We build this and then again, we're mowing the grass around it, which we're already paying to mow the grass around it. Not that it can't grow into more phases and other, and other features and buildings and storage and concession or whatever, but to start with the model, I think the marijuana fund could be a significant...
Hi. And I have a quick, I'm sort of throwing a question over both Rodney and Mayor. When we were discussing this prior with the commission, didn't we discover that there was something within the rules of the marijuana funding that we could not utilize funding to another organ? And I know, and I know before you jumped on my throat.
Just wait a minute.
I'm on you.
Marijuana funding.
From my understanding, from my understanding, what you're getting at, I remember that conversation vividly. It was, we, the city can't use city money to say, hey, Peter, your Friends of Trails, we can't give you $10,000 and say, hey, go, go partner with Velo. But I think, I'm not a, I know nothing about that kind of stuff. But just from being around, I feel like if the city contracted with Velo Solutions, then we could even, but like I said, I...
We need to find out. There are some, there are some gray areas still in my brain after that meeting process as to how we can utilize the funding. And I want, and I know we got into the discussion with the dog park at one point, using that as an analogy, as we had used city labor and manpower to do work. And my whole point was, well, that's, that has a value. Why can't money have value like human? So I'm just saying that while I love the idea of being able to utilize marijuana funds, number one, we never know how much is going to come in on an annual basis. We think it's going to be about the same this year as it was last year, but we think that it could also decrease as years go on. Secondly, we just need to make sure that we can utilize the money in such a fashion.
But also there's been past practices of working and partnering with other groups, agencies to make a lot of various parks. So that all needs to be looked into to, well, we directly ask, I directly ask, can we take like, you know, 100,000 dollars? Given. And we could not do that. But this is a very different scenario.
But we could.
Or either one of us.
Right, right.
But we could put our request for proposal and contract with somebody for design in the same way that we pay Row to do a cost analysis or an architectural drawing. And I'm not really sure about this. I'm with you on the uncertainty because this is kind of new territory. But it seems like if it's city funds, that the commission can say, we want to spend our money on a city project. And we're going to pay a contractor to do so.
And I'm not privy to any of the proposals prior to this. Do you have an estimate on what the total cost would be for construction and parking and all that?
It's cost estimates.
It doesn't actually change that, even if this is...
I got it right here.
Oh, perfect.
It seemed like the pump track was around 900?
Yes.
But we, I mean, once again, we had asked Row to do a cost analysis of three sports or activities with variables that were, we didn't know the property, we didn't know, you know, there were many things that were just unknown.
906 or 8, I can't tell.
So it's 908, but again, mobilization, 66 grand, clearing, 10. Site preparation, 100 spaces, 75 grand. Aggregate base, this is based on 100 spots, 128. Contingency?
Well, that's always a, there's always a contingency fund because you never know.
So some of these are certainly engineering, design and administration, 100 grand. I think, and again, this is Doug saying this to me, that it's, it's big on purpose to be conservative, better to, better to come on.
Absolutely, but we would rather it be that's with large numbers and go, okay, this, but we also have to be smart enough to look through the numbers and know that these are variables. Now, I do want to make sure that we're not just arbitrarily saying, we don't need 100 spots when a four-acre pump track through whatever the ordinances are of that type of a facility, an expectation of attendance requires that. That's another concern. It's one thing for you to say that we need, we'd only need 30 spaces. I just want to make sure that the state or our ordinances aren't saying, no, we actually need 30.
That's a great point. And the same is true, Tony, with the other unknown, the pump track. This asphalt pump track line item, 350, that is the Velo Solutions portion for them to build just the pump track itself. Now, that's based on us looking at a dozen other versions that they've built and picking the closest size and style that we could come up with and looking at the prices that they charged two years ago in Ohio. So there's a little bit of unknown there as well. So we're, yeah.
I mean, we're not going to know the actual funding of sorts until we really break into this and say, okay, we're committed to blah, blah, blah. Let's figure this out. We do need to understand what MEDC might be willing to contribute if that was an option. We've been successful with two other MEDC matching, three.
Well, city two and then the other city.
Pocket Park and Dog Park. Oh, yeah, there you go. You know, community foundation, I think as organizations around our community, they are needing more funding. So they are going to be tapped in other ways, but I think that there's also a strong interest with community foundation and quality of life. I'm babbling instead of asking questions.
No, we are, we are saying aloud.
That's how I, that's just how I do it.
Yeah, that worked, that worked. Check to that public, we need places, public spaces grant that those three projects funded. I believe that's still active.
It is still.
And I'm pretty positive that that program is still offering up to a 50 thousand dollar match. If you, you know, if they raise 50 and they'll give us 50. If we say our goal is 50, we raise 25, they won't give us that.
Well, that's not exactly...
That's how that works.
What about the Spark grant?
Well, yeah, that's a whole other story. I talked to someone else about that today and we already, we submitted three projects for that already in the first grant, funding. And it's a whole other story, but they exceeded their expectations.
Yeah, over 400, that's intense. So 290 million dollars of projects and they only have 65 million. So I don't know how they're going to sort that out and I just heard this today. So the odds of us getting one for any of the projects that we submitted for, I'll probably slant them out, but you never know.
I know, I also heard that they're looking for projects that there's going to be other community partnerships where they can do the best they can for the knowledge.
And there's also other grant programs that, you know, we have an active master plan, which is important. There's other DNR grants, the trust fund and access to recreation that we could apply for. The thing that everyone got excited for is Spark grants, a lot less rules and guidelines and the money comes quicker. You know, those other DNR grants, they're like a year cycle before you do in April and you won't even know until December if you get it or not. Which wouldn't make that big a difference because, you know, this thing happened tomorrow, you know, six months from now, a year from now, two, two years from now. Which wouldn't make that big a difference, because, you know, this thing happened tomorrow, you know, six months from now, a year from now, two, two years from now. But, um, so we can, there's money out there to get.
Can you explain something for me? So. So a skate park, small, contained, usually concrete for skateboard, well, skateboard bike and roller, right? So like Sterling Heights has a skate park. It's not considered a pump track, correct?
Right.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that I understand the difference between the two. And then what has been constructed out there, which artistically looks fantastic, and I love the wood and the, the, I, I like the aesthetics of it. But I don't know what that is called.
That's called a jump line.
Okay.
It's another feature of a lot of trail systems around here. So there's, for example, Stony Park, Stony Creek Metro Park, they just refabbed their whole mountain bike facility, their, their single track, not their paved around the lake thing. And they incorporated, it's called Flow Trail, and so this is kind of a similar thing to the pump track, where the old traditional system was you ram up to the top of the hill in the steepest spot, and then you ride across the ridge, and then you take the downhill, and then, you know, just traditional trails that took you to these big features. Well, those traditional trails that are like that, um, then you have a fall line, and then the water goes right down that gully, and now you have a gully this deep. It wasn't built and designed for flow, and especially in relationship to water, the ultimate enemy of the builder. And so that's the difference between the sort of more modern era of trail design and build, are these flow trail concepts that often have these mountain bike enhanced features that always have a way out. So the person that wants to hit the jump, hits the jump, the person who opts out, or the table, or the berm, or those things. And so one of the features that's really popular are jump lines. And Stony had this incredible jump line that people, you know, you got thirty people standing there waiting to have their line. So it's like a line of several jumps in a row, instead of a circular version like over at Richfield Bike Park. And so, again, we just copied another model that people that want to leave the ground, and we raised money through our, great for a cause Beaver Dash Bash and private donations, and then built it. And people are fiendish about it. So that's a jump line, that's different. And then the main, the other thing to think about in terms of the difference between a pump track and a skate park, and there's a lot of overlap, and Velo does both, and often we see skate parks with pump tracks, is the pump is the, the, the. You see people enter off the lip into the pump track, they're not pedaling. The skater that goes around that circle three times, the foot never hits the ground. It's riding that pump, and that drop, just like when you go over a big hill and you get that. So that pump is the body pumping to put the momentum to drop you low. And sort of that's different than like what Port Huron just did with their new skate park, next to their Flow Track, single track mountain bike trail in downtown.
Which really makes, what he just explained to you with that pump track as experience within riding them, is a huge physical agility. So someone, you know, it's, it's something that takes effort. And look, you know, you look at this, and, you know, it is a physical exercise that is not, you know, just jump into it and not move. You have to move your body. So it is kind of a cool thing there, too, it's, it's a physical agility. Your body, your body working together, and it's, it's flow.
It's almost how much carries your body.
The whole track without pedaling.
So in the state of Michigan, who has the best?
The best what?
Pump track. Is it Rouge? It's the only one?
It's the only asphalt pump track, Velo Solutions pump track. There are some other smaller track, Ryan, where was that picture, was that Chesney or something? Remember that post, you saw a picture, and it was a little tiny pump track, it would've fit in this room. It was one oval. So there are some, there are some other minor ones, and there are also some dirt pump tracks, especially the Western Chapter, Grand Rapids, they've got endless trail projects and, and big, big money. So there are some little mini, Traverse City has sort of a mini dirt pump track at the, um, the trailhead for the Vasa Bike Park. But the, the only asphalt one is, is that Rouge one, Heinz Park.
And Heinz Park would be probably the better one, a design like that, asphalt.
We think so, yeah.
Be less maintenance, it wouldn't fall apart, it would just be, you know, last much longer.
And the skater.
Skateboards aren't going on.
The skater is not going on dirt, the rollerblader and the little kid with the scooter, they're not going on dirt. That's the justification for the asphalt and the extra cost.
Would the maintenance of the asphalt ever require it being replaced, or is it simply a patch situation? Or how often would it need to be replaced?
We don't know.
Well, a lot of that's gonna be dependent on.
With this, that comes up often, and there's a lot of ways to answer that, but really, we don't know, other than what we've seen from apps, from asphalt pump tracks around the world, and how long they've lasted from Velo Solutions. All we have is what we can look at, and the duration that we've seen is pretty shocking, but. That's, that's, no, we would have not predicted.
Seems like we know, we miss out on the snowstorms, and it seems like Ohio always gets out the snowstorms. But yet, Ohio just got some amazing pump track, and, and Ohio, you know, has something like that. There's no reason why we should be in that.
Yeah, we gotta be in Ohio.
Here's a couple of things that I guess. I, I mean, I like the idea, I wish my kids would've had something like this when they were little.
You're here.
But, uh, being, um, you're talking, needing one acre, this thing will be one acre out of the four.
Approximately.
So is there a, a plan with the other three acres, is that, did I miss something there with the usage of the other three acres?
Maybe parking and pathways connecting.
So the upkeep is the city's responsibility once it's.
Yeah, right now, we pay the. That's about it. City already owes that, or pays that.
The only concern, I shouldn't say the only, yeah, a couple of concerns. The use of any kind of marijuana fund, as has already been said, we don't know in the future, these guys could pack it up and leave to Peter. And are we, if we're going to, I would hope to think we would not want to rely on those funds, like we do a tip-up fund or something like that, that's gonna be continuously coming in for fag. These guys could just fold up shop tomorrow, and we're gone, and now we don't have any funds to continue this program. The other thing that is a concern, again, don't give me, I like the ideas, and I think, I think they're needed. We talked about skate parks for, oh my gosh, forever. Is liability. Who is covering liability?
Well, the city has a policy that would cover liability in terms, just like any of our sidewalks or their parks and whatever.
Is there special liability in things like that? Because there's a difference between walking down a sidewalk versus getting on a bicycle and jumping over a hill, or riding on something like that.
Do we know the liability falls if someone falls off a pump track and cracks their neck?
Exactly.
Or one of the cement things along the river on the cemetery loop? Where's, where's the liability really filed? Is it user, I'd say, user. Like the trails along the, across the street from the hospital. If I run my bike in that path right there, and all of a sudden I slip and I slip, and I fall, whose fault is that gonna be? It's gonna be my fault.
Well, it's, it is, but unfortunately, whether they're in a lawsuit society.
But it should be pretty much the same, I think.
You would think.
Right.
And you would hope.
You can ask that question as well.
But that's, that's just the concern that I have, especially when you're dealing with kids. I can, now you got mom and dad going, oh, well, guess what? We just won lottery because, you know, Johnny just broke his nose on the city property. So I would say, you know, what kind of extra costs?
In our, um, choice to take donated, donated land that we bought in foreclosure for that canoe landing, we talked about the watershed coalition owning it, we talked about land conservancy owning it, we talked about who to give it to, and ultimately said, of course, we would give it to the county because they own the other canoe landings. And nobody has greater liability coverage than municipalities. And if you think about the number, I think about injuries myself on the football field before I quit tackle football in the first game when I smashed my elbow and was done with that. I think about ankles snapping on the soccer field, which I also did. Every one of these athletic endeavors has tremendous risk. At the ice rink, the guy that, in a non-collision, fell, and I couldn't get out of the way, crushed into my knee, broke two of my ankle bones. I recognize that we're in a, a, a lawyer paranoia sort of world, but if a city, if we as a city can't cover liability for athletes, that's our, that's our fail.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against this thing.
Yeah.
But we need to make sure we've got eyes wide open into cost, because there's a cost to doing anything. And if it's going to, it's brand new to us, it's brand new to you, it's brand new to a lot of people. Again, a pump track, I didn't know what a pump track was till you just showed that video. I'm thinking pump and iron, man.
I will say, I was glad to see the video, because in my head, I had the thought of like the concrete skate park. And one of the notes I made was, I really liked in the video the integration with the landscape that was around it. You saw trees, you saw green, it wasn't just a big gray, you know, area. So that was, you know, something that I thought was a positive that I wasn't aware of.
Especially if we get this golf course, and this guy's throwing his frisbee behind him, hitting the next guy behind him.
I would kill it, man. It only hurts for a few minutes.
But you've also seen in that video, like, you see that little girl, you know what I mean? It's not, it's all age groups, it's just not a certain age group. It's, when you go out through the Oakdale Trail now, and you ride, and you see all these little kids out there, his dad or his mom's taking them out, that's the best thing you could ever see out there on those trails.
Well, I like the idea, because it's gonna take traffic from here.
As a downtown resident, I see so many kids, and especially in summer, and not so much now, but skateboards, bikes, you know, they're craving a place to go, that I would definitely say.
If anybody does anything directly for Peter right now, I say with this marijuana discussion here, we can figure out a plan. I'm not sure there might be some more comments about the disco course as well. And then, you know, we hammered down two projects. It sounds to me like there's consensus on those two. I guess before we get further talking about those two amongst our group here, is there any other projects that we would like to see or recommend that we add to this list? Personally, um, you know, we're worried about maintaining currently what we have. The trying, uh, the Spark Grant, for instance, the three that we applied for was just to maintain our trails that we have. We paid for linear pathway around Roden Park, Paint Ruck and Rotary. If you guys been to Rotary Park lately and seen our trails, that pretty much washed away with nothing. So we did three separate grants to try to cover the cost for those. So we had a lot of stuff already that we need to think about fixing, and the interesting thing with grants, they have a lot of rules, they want new stuff. They don't wanna maintain things. So that was the cool thing about Spark Grant, that it has many rules, and, you know, maintenance of trails is one thing that you could use the funds for. We can't use other DNR grants, though. So that's why we're hoping that we can maybe get that money to take care of those things, because we will need to replace those trails. You know, if you guys been on them, but there's cracks. Some used to be ten-foot, now they're four-foot, um, which I want to think we would have to worry about in this location with water flooding. Rotary Park, the water goes over, it just washes away what we had. So other than what you see on that sheet there, you know, we meet, we meet every year as department, and we come up with these things, and most of them are necessities, you know, there's a few things on that that we'd like to do. But most of the stuff, I'd say, we gotta, like the stuff they're exonerating, which we don't need to talk about, but we gotta replace things like that. The building is what I value, you know. I'd say those aren't the fun CFP projects, but, you know, for next year, you know, we have the drinking ponds. You know, we have the original drinking fountain from the nineteen, early nineteen nineties that half of them don't work, you can't buy parts for them. You know, we seem to upgrade those, you know? You know, most of this stuff is stuff we already had that we're fixing up or replacing with new stuff. So I can't, I, I guess my mind really hasn't thought too much about new stuff, so that's good that we're doing these kind of things. And that's why we, you know, take input from the city, from residents and things like that, because without you telling us what you want, you know, sometimes, you know, you leave it up to a few people, you know. We're thinking about fixing what we have, you know, so it's good to hear these things. I don't know, that's just my opinion on that, Ryan.
As in, we do really good, like our playgrounds are all up to date, getting first ones are last one replaced of the spring. Our fences are all in good shape, our pathways are lacking, the tennis courts are lacking, but we're, you know, looking with the Kwanzaa, the Legacy Playground, maybe at the Roden Park tennis court area to repurpose that. Tennis courts, the craft department needs some help, our bathroom facilities need maintenance and updates, that's us concerning. Annual E-Cap for improvements, stuff that we wanna target, it's great. It's great to look at new projects, but we also have to be concerned about stuff that's thirty years old, make sure it's safe, it's aesthetically good for the people coming to visit, and, you know, it's still state-of-the-art good stuff, we've got playgrounds and facilities, so that we can have good-looking products and save money. I'm gonna make this up.
No, I understand the concern about keeping up. We have wonderful parks, we have wonderful trails, and yes, we have to make it. However, this is a special.
Oh, I realize that, I was just making a comment generally at this, this year.
It's nice to see community, possibly with different community pockets of funds, where we can maybe build something. I can see with the pump track, and I'm sure kind of disco as well, that the community's gonna get in there and afford it. Because I just saw that pump track. But I would think that there's a lot of volunteers that will be helping to maintain that.
Support and jump on board.
I do know that there's some particular funds set aside as a community foundation. I put in money, as a matter of fact, for community park areas. I just started, so that will continue to grow as well.
Just a moment of clarification, so when we were talking about the matching grant funds to MEDC, our obligation was to raise fifty thousand dollars before we could even go into this program. Then when we got into the program, our goal was to make an additional fifty thousand dollars or up to fifty thousand dollars for MEDC to match that, that amount of money. So I didn't want you to just think that, oh, we get fifty thousand dollars and we don't have to raise, there is, there is a.
The idea behind that is really, you get your price, subtract a hundred thousand off that, you gotta have the rest of that ready to roll. Because the idea of that project, that grant is, that should be the last step, the last funds you need to build. So I think they expect you to break around within the next six months or so after you get that money. So let's say the pump track found a thousand, you know, you need to have four hundred thousand raised or committed, and you could crowdfund fifty, then MEDC's a sweet, Mitch, reach your goal, here's the last fifteen, and you have your five hundred, boom, build it. So that's kind of, that's kind of the process kind of that MEDC, so. But I have no other project ideas other than these two we talked about. Does anyone else here have anything else we'd like to discuss?
So we recently, just this weekend, went to the DDA Board of Retreat, and one of the statistics that I took with me was. And one of the statistics that I took with me was that, I think it was what, twenty-five percent of our population is eighteen or under?
Yeah.
And so I work with youth for my job. And knowing that this meeting was coming up today, I asked different youth that I work with, you know, hey, if we had this money, what would you be interested in seeing? And I have done zero research on this. I just promised them that I would pass this information along. They wanted American Ninja Warrior track. So just, I've done my part. I'm on video. They know that I have put that out there beyond speaking with youth. I have no other information on that.
I'm not the only one that has a show on watching it.
That's all I know is that, so.
That seems like an indoor example.
Does it? I don't know.
Just protect us from the elements.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like you would, like, could do something like that, block off, like, say, take out one more basketball courts or the racquetball courts at the rec center and basically build it from there. Make sure like a hardcore jungle.
Right.
I mean, I think we find ourselves in a really unique situation where we've got some additional funds that have come in and now we need to figure out what is the best stewardship for this money, number one. Number two, what does have the most draw for our own community as well as visitors? I know when I visited Sterling Heights and their facility and actually got to speak with some of the guys, and granted it was a skate park. But what was fascinating to me is that people were traveling from Garden City up to Sterling Heights to use their skate park. Even though they had one there, Sterling Heights was better. So there are people that are traveling a distance, and this was sort of youth traveling also. I also want to make sure that whatever we do is of quality and that it has some notability, that we're not just doing the bare minimum. I'd like to, if we were to go with either of these projects, I'd like to see that we're recognized for design awards. I'd like to see that we're recognized as a location for competition or that sort of thing, whether it be pump track or whether it be disc golf. We just, I'm tired of being good enough. It's like, oh, we got it, but it's okay. I just, I want it to be the best it's doing.
Yeah, and like it's, you know, we try to do that with most of our stuff. Like the dog park, for instance, that could have been way cheaper, but we wanted the expense. We wanted it to look nice, you know? So I think that's very important. You know, we have to be proud of our projects.
Oh, we did, and we accomplished that with our recs.
Exactly.
And I'm not trying to may say everything that we've, we've touched and or built, but we've also, we can recognize that we've had some missteps along the way with some projects that have blended it up hard enough and not been fully decorated or aesthetically put together. I just want us to be noted that we're doing something well and that will really bring into, as Josh's point, the eco tourism in some of these activities.
All right, Larry? Harry, too? I mean, I didn't even, I didn't know they had a presentation. I mean, I didn't know you guys had a presentation. I could have put you on the agenda. I mean, I'm. Wanted to hear what they had to say. How long is it? Yeah, no, that was, that was my, I was looking for other ideas and I was gonna go back to these two.
Can, he's saying that it's a fifteen minute presentation. If we are considering one of these activities, should we not take the opportunity while we're all here? Do you mind?
So I want to flip the coin of what Peter said, where I was also born at the hospital, but the second that I was legally allowed to, I got out of this town because I didn't want to be here anymore because it was a miserable place for me to grow up. I was an all A student. I was in NHS. I played all of the sports, but I still got harassed by the cops every time I tried to do something fun. And I was only a hooligan here. I was only a hooligan in their eyes and that was just the way that I was saw and they essentially chased out. That, I still foster that. I am twenty-six years old. I still feel that. I come back to this town only to see my parents and maybe grab dinner and I'm out. And I only live thirty minutes away. I'm not that far away. I would like it to not be like that, right? Like, I want a reason to come to appear. And I think that Peter brought up a lot of good points about the meshing of things and, okay, the disc golf people versus the that people. But here's my thing is that I have a lot of hobbies. I like mountain biking, I like hiking, I love disc golfing, I like playing in the parks. I want, there's, all of those things kind of mesh well together. So I don't think that, and I think the metro parks are a great example of that where you have, it is a recreational area. It is not just for this person, for that person, you know, what have you, right? It's kind of a, hey, it's just something else to do, right? And I just want it to be something that's in front of people and something that's accessible. And again, it's another thing that's all ages. I see pictures of people having their babies holding frisbees. But people are that diehard into this sport. And while we are asking you guys for funding, the reality is, is that the disc golf community is so grassroots. Last weekend, there was a tournament held, I don't know, upwards of like five figures raised just for someone's mother got cancer. So the benefit that comes is a lot more intangible of that, right? Not just the upkeep, not just the volunteers that are willing to upkeep the courses to, and not just making the course better, right? But I can't think of the last day that I saw where it wasn't someone that was like, hey, I walked through this park today, here's a bag of trash that I walked out with while I was playing disc golf with it, right? That's the kind of community and the positivity that you bring with this sport coming into an area. That's what was drawn to it and that is what is so much different than this versus how I felt when I was growing up here. I make new friends every time I go and play. Every person that you walk up to, I don't care if they're a pro or if it's the first time they've ever played. It's accessible, you have something to relate to about. And more than likely, they're more than willing to teach you, give you a disc. The first time I ever played, I got a disc. And I, I keep extras in my trunk every time so that if you see someone that has a whammo frisbee that's out there throwing it around, I can give it to them and say, hey, this is what this game is. This is kind of how you play and explain it, show them some YouTube videos to watch and just kind of ignite that spark, you know, within someone else. Because we're going quickly here, I'm gonna skip around a little bit, but. Just like any other recreational activity. Yeah. Oh, it's loose on there. So just like any other recreational activity, disc golf has blown up post COVID world. We, there's more than ten million players around the world that are playing now. Fifty-five percent increase in growth from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. With, and this is just what we have data on, right? So this is just people that have the app on the phone, on their phone, that love it enough to have the app and go, I need to track my score today, just like when you go regular golf and, you know, you get your tee card when you start. So we have, there's an app on our phone. And this is just, this is just the amount of people, the people that are that into it and that's how much growth we're seeing. That's not talking about people that have two, that their cousin gave them and they go a couple times a year. The PDGA statistics, so this is just active members and then numbers of courses, right? So you see in twenty eleven, three point four thousand courses. Twenty twenty-one, we're up to ten and a half thousand courses. Active members, sixteen thousand in twenty eleven, a hundred and ten thousand now. And the PDGA membership is a fifty dollar membership that you're paying every single year. And then that's saying that you're gonna go and play in active events that you're putting money into, whether it's fundraising, whether it's just competition, what have you, right? But it's bringing it together. In general, that's like seventy-two people and, you know, there's, there's Disc Golf For A Cause, which is just straight up a charity one. There's a lot of, you know, people behind it, diehard people and just a lot of money and kind of community that come around it as well. So a couple of different classifications, casual disc golfers. Like you said, you play with your cousin that's really into it a couple of times a year. Talking about twenty-five percent. So I would say that anyone that's never heard of it that's in the city of Willpeere is kind of put into that category. There's clinics, there's teaching, there's, you know, handing them out, just saying, you know, holding public events, things like that to kind of get the awareness out of there. But then you have like a regular disc golfer, maybe you play once or twice a month. Then you have dedicated disc golfers, okay, once a week. Then you have weird people like me that play, I played two rounds last weekend and I almost went and played yesterday, but I ran out of time. Michigan has four hundred and fifty thousand disc golf, active disc golfers. It's probably more than that now. I ran this data last year when we first kind of, my mom and I first kind of started talking about this. Michigan's known as the great disc state. Two out of the five biggest manufacturers of disc golf in the whole entire world, one is in Marlette, Michigan, and one is in Wixom, Michigan, right? We have a ton of support from them too. So there's a lot of opportunity from that front too. Someone that's on the above par team actually holds a clinic, which is something that we would like to do in Willpeere as well for, you know, teaching kids about disc golf, getting them in their hands. This gentleman has like three kids show up. MVP sent him three boxes of discs to give these kids, to hand out to them so that they can just have it in their hands to spread it. And kind of, like I said, that positivity kind of revol, you know, it just gravitates towards this sport. And it's kind of infectious. It's really like, hey, I have this thing. It's, I call it hiking with a purpose, right? Sometimes it's hard to be like, oh, I had a long day at work. I want to get out of the house and I want to go for a hike. I love hiking, but it's hard. You work ten hours a day, you have an hour commute both directions. You're not necessarily like, oh, I really want to go out. But if there's a game or something else involved, it kind of flips a switch and you're like, you know what? I do want to go do that. You get to go out, enjoy nature, enjoy recreation, et cetera. Based on seventy-seven hundred people, fifty-one percent of them said they'd introduce one to three other people to the sport. Twenty-four percent said two to, or four to six people. Five percent said seven to nine, and then ten percent said ten or more players. I personally probably taught a hundred and fifty different people how to play for the very first time just because I love it that much and I want someone to have something else, you know, to do that's a positive impact on that way. We'll skip through the media coverage, but that's a big part, that's another part that's blowing up. They have ESPN two coverage that has like two hundred and fifty thousand live concurrent viewers. Seventy-one percent of courses were built in the last decade. There's five point two eight courses being built on average a day throughout the world, no matter where it is. And there's thirteen thousand, I bet that's probably closer to like seventeen thousand now, if not more, honestly, because even within this area, I think there's three that are currently under development with plans for two more in the very near future. Number of courses going from, what, this, we'll say it was invented in the seventies, but it didn't really take off until the eighties. You know, it's growing at an exponential rate. The interest is there, people love it. We're third in the country in PDGA membership. We're sixth in the country for courses per players. So we have five point five percent of the players across the entire nation, but we only have like four point five percent of the courses. Local course statistics. So these are all the courses that are within fifty miles of here. Look at the yearly plays that we're talking about. I mean, some of the firefighters, which is in Troy, have about twelve thousand plays. And those are just people that are actually recording it. We're not talking about, and that's one single park. Look at how many parks are on there and then, I mean, just think about the amount of people that are willing to play and want to play that are also in this area that kind of has a drought. You kind of have to go thirty minutes in any direction from here to be able to actually play a course. Heat map, so it's like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I mean, you can just see how quickly, I mean, it's, it, it, once you get the itch, it's kind of game over. These are very local courses. So Seymour is down in Oxford and I would say that's really the closest one, but even still, you're talking about twenty-five minutes. Seymour is very well maintained. Their parks department actually are the ones that do the maintenance. The guy that runs it is very passionate about disc golf. Mount Park is in Flint. Hunt's Hideaway is in Otisville. Hollywood's is in Holly. They're opening a second course because there's so much demand in Holly at that singular course that they needed a second course. And then Goldenrod is in Ridgefield. I kind of just talked through all that, but you can kind of see the map. Look at us in Willpeere. Yeah, I kind of, how far, how far away do you have to go, right? North Branch has one, but.
I was just gonna say, I help with the Altad tournament every year that they do there.
Yep, yep, but how far away is it to get to downtown, like, you grow up in Willpeere?
And you can use it during school hours, that's the thing.
Yep, exactly. Seasonal impact, like I said, the diehards, people are gonna play during it. I mean, we've had a very mild winter this year, but people do play year round. It's a continual use. Let's go through the statistics just based on time. But I mean, you can see, yes, it dips off, but it's like any outside activity, right? Like, you just kind of lose some of your impact, but there are still people continually using it year round. So like I said earlier, I have two kind of courses planned. Crampton, I think, is a perfect place for it. There's a lot of open space there and we can navigate around and, like I said, kind of directionally, point the disking away from where there's other things going on. And that kind of is the, hey, what's that, right? The, what is that? What are you, what are those people doing? Why are they throwing frisbees? What are they doing over there? I would say we could fit, and I have it drawn in here, but nine holes at Crampton. Sorry, I'm going too fast. Oh my gosh.
There we go, there we go.
Sorry, I came right at the beginning again.
We almost had it.
Technology's hard.
Yes.
There we go. Okay, so Google Trends on searching, and I know you guys talked about like pickleball, hiking trails, mountain biking, things like that. Granted, bit of a skewed statistics, it's just three, but based on the Detroit IP address, so any search in Michigan, you look up hiking trails, pickleball or disc golf, disc golf is fifty percent of that split. That's, I mean, that's pretty massive, right? It's on, I went, I looked on the website online. It is in your guys' recreation plan. It's something that you guys have talked about for wanting for a long time. And the biggest thing that I've heard is that we just don't have enough room, which is honestly, in my opinion, the complete opposite of the case. I've seen people, there's a course down in St. Clair Shores that has soccer fields, baseball diamonds. They have another recreational activity in there and a twenty-four hole disc golf course in a single plot. It's all about how you design, right? And the people are gonna come if you build it, right? Especially with the, we'll call drought within this area. You guys have a course here, now you guys are catching so many people from around here. Everyone that lives in, from here over to Davidson, they're just gonna go play Goldenrod. They're gonna go play Hunt's Hideaway. They're gonna go over to Flint. You're taking now those potential people and now they're traveling out there to go spend their money rather than in this area. And it's low cost and low impact, right? Once we pour those cement tee pads and put those baskets in, all volunteers are gonna take care of it, right? Our team is managing four or five courses at this point. They're doing all the volunteer hours, organizing the days to come out and volunteer. We all bring our own tools. We take care of it, right? It's not, I mean, mowing in somewhere like Crampton, but it's not something that you guys have to continually upkeep, right? This is a one-time investment and once that's done, and you guys don't have to pay for labor, is the other nice part, right? You guys are just buying the equipment and the equipment that we need to install it. Volunteers are gonna take care of the rest. Again, talking about the drought. That is the Discraft Great Lakes Open. There was forty-five hundred people in attendance, just spectating there this year, right? So you're talking about walking through all of that all day. And mind you, this is a toboggan course. You're talking about a couple thousand feet of elevation change. I've walked it a couple of years in a row. You have to bring a gallon of water or you will get dehydrated. The passion is there all across it, right? And there's people that drive from like all the way up from the U P just to come down to watch the professional disc golfers come. Another benefit, you have tee signs, right? You have options for local businesses to sponsor them, to contribute. Maybe they buy a trash can, you know, whatever it is. There's, there's other places to pull funding and to help continue to support it. And because of the grassroots nature of the sport, I mean, everyone's already kind of used to doing those things. This is a completely, almost new scenario that we're, that we're dealing with of the city going, hey, we have extra funding, right? And like you said, when have we ever had extra money? So, and then just the, it's fun for all ages. I have seen people that look like they can't walk, go out and play disc golf because they're so old and decrepit. And I have seen three-year-olds go out there and they're having the time of their life as long as they can focus. I work for General Motors. Safety is our overriding priority. Live values that bring home, people home safely as a person, every site, every day. I live that in my life. I truly, truly and wholeheartedly believe it. And I would never bring something to you guys that I think is gonna actually harm someone. You know, I, Peter has known me since I think I was this, about this tall. And I would not, and on top of that, my stepdad Ed works with Peter and the bike guys a lot, that he helps maintain the trails, right? I want all of those things to work harmoniously. I want to come visit my mother in Willpeere, grab a bite to eat, go play a round of disc golf, hop on my mountain bike and like have it be somewhere that's like actually a destination instead of somewhere I have to go. and like have it be somewhere that's like actually a destination instead of somewhere I have to go. Um, all right, sample layouts. So just taking a look at Crampton, mind you, none of this is set in stone, none of that is anything. But I just wanted to show you that it's, it's a hundred percent possible. I was wondering like, oh, maybe I can actually fit more than nine holes within Crampton Park and do it. But, uh, you know, okay, you start from a parking lot here, you work your way across the, you incorporate the river, the objects, the things like that. Um, you know, you're throwing away from the pavilion, going across the river, you come back, there's nothing there. You kind of play towards the road, cross the road, go behind the tennis courts where you don't really have anything going on there. And then just follow that river along the way, sweep all the way around, avoiding the playground. And then the last hole's kind of in the woods. So it's like a cool finishing hole type of thing, right? Nothing's set in stone about that by any means, but it's entirely possible. And there's plenty of space in somewhere that's as small as Crampton. Go ahead.
Good question. Is there, I know like a, you know, you're a golf, you may have like a hundred and twenty yard par three.
Yep.
May have a three hundred yard, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a golfer either, but is there like a limit on how long holes are?
No limit. I mean, it's same as regular golf where you have par threes all the way up to par fives, depending, right? But that kind of depends for
Would you fit par fives in there?
I wouldn't put a par five in something like that. I would say this is like a par three course. But I planned it that way and looked at that space that way because I want it to be an accessibility thing. You don't want to put a thousand foot par five somewhere where you're trying to let people learn how to do something, right? Um, rather than, rather, hey, the first time they go out and play, maybe they get a birdie and they're like, that's so cool. I want to do that again.
Um, you had mentioned when you very first stood up and spoke that Otisville, I believe, you said, had the fourth rated Michigan course? And that you wanted something on par with that to draw in competitions and things like that?
Yep.
What makes a disc golf rated highly, I guess? I'm not sure what, you know, designments it as better than another disc golf, disc golf course.
So it's challenge, shape, or, or diversity of shots that you have to throw, or like the skill levels and things like that? As well as just kind of the feel, the flow, right? Like, are you gonna get lost when you go? Are you gonna, hey, oh, yep, there's the next one. Here's where I grow from. Um, in general, uh, like those championship level courses are probably gonna have one or two, or potentially even three sets of tee pads. So out of one span of distance, now rather than having one hole, you're gonna have three holes within there, right? So you can go back and play that course every single day and play it differently and have fun there every single day.
It's like versatility?
Yep, exactly, exactly. Um, and, uh, championship, that's, there's a lot of weird gray area and all of that, but it's kind of like, okay, does it challenge the people at certain levels or certain tiers of competition to the best of their ability essentially, right? I love this game, but I'm not good at it. I play at the very bottom tier, right? But can I have fun? But can a professional also step on there and have fun and compete and, and, you know, do it in that way?
Uh, just real quick, I want to update you on a little project that we're working on for a while. Another tunnel to nowhere under the bridge right there, just to the, just to the right of number eight.
Yep.
There is gonna be a trail going under there. And the plans were to have a walking path coming out of the east side of the tunnel, kind of along the river to the Colinas Bridge. And then coming out of the tunnel, heading north, kind of along the bottom of that hill towards the playground. Um, so eight and nine would kind of be where the trail is similar. Um, explain, just explain to me, being ignorant of the disc golf, how that works with, um, this trailer?
It's, so, so it's a, it's a courtesy thing, right? And it works extremely well. There's courses that have paths that go all the way through them. You have dog walkers, families, all of that, all the time, right? If you see someone, if you're standing this far in front of me, I'm not gonna throw up.
Right.
Yeah, just, yeah, using your common sense, right? Like, I mean, there's always might be someone dumb, right? But, um, that, I don't, I've never seen any major issues with that, right? Just because of that. Obviously, I didn't know about that and just took the sniff from Google Earth, right? And you try to play around that ahead of time.
Exactly.
But I just don't foresee that really being a problem. Uh, just because it's, I don't know, it's almost human nature, right? It's just like, okay, I don't, I don't want to hit you, right? Um, so that's, I, I see that integrated in parks all the time with really little to no issue.
To build a decent course, one that would draw, what type of acreage are you talking about? One that would be the PDGA approved certified.
Like, will a nine-hole course do better?
No, this would be like a beginner level intro course. Oh.
And it's usually between five and 10 acres, depending on how you do it. And you can either be throwing it in trees, trees like those between the trails, or, um, over water. That's another one.
Well, for instance, Mil-, uh, Milford, you know how big their course is?
Yeah, I work in Milford, yeah.
How much, how much land does that take up?
Oh, that one's massive.
Which one are you talking about? Toboggan?
Yeah, I guess.
The one that just showed.
Oh, Toboggan? That's
Yeah, Toboggan is sixty eight acres. But they also have like Toboggan runs and car paths and everything.
Yeah, that's a little, that's, that's a completely different piece. You can do it, especially within the woods, which is kind of where we had planted. With, I would say significantly less land than that, because if you're throwing out in the open, think about it, just like a professional on golf, right? Like compared to any average golfer, they can hit it about three times as far, right? When it's way out in the open, the professionals have to have it be so far that it's a challenge essentially. Versus in the woods, now you have to try to not hit all of those trees. So then you can get a lot more creative with it and kind of maximize it in that way. Um.
Do you have, I mean, are there other courses out there like this? Like beginner, like small?
Oh, yeah, all over the place. And actually, believe it or not, the beginner courses tend to be far more popular than any championship level course.
Oh, they just built one in Lansing called the Ted Bowl Disc Golf Course, and that's in Lake Lansing Park. Um, and they put it in, I think they spent seventy eight thousand dollars and they were like, you know, clear cutting property. And, and I mean, they spent like tons of time and money. And they said that every single day they had at least a hundred people go in there and play. So it's like five dollars a round. They take you to the booth. But they have all, they have a retirement community of people who are sixty five and older. And when I was out there playing for the first time, maybe two weeks ago, and it's twenty degrees, there's sixty people out there. There's, so the, the smaller ones definitely draw a lot of, uh, unique people versus championship courses where we run tournaments and events.
Yep. Um, Brandon, again, just, just a concept of, okay, we have the space to do it, right? Um, this is just, I mean, you can see the, that's what I looked up was Oakdale Mountain Bike Trail, right? Just the sheer amount of land that's there, right? And being able to work with the natural landscapes that are there, I think that there's, I mean, and I mean, granted, it's, it depends on the bike plan, and it depends on a lot of different things, and this is just the proof of concept. But there's more than enough room there to do what I think that like needed to be done to op-, to operate with it and create that kind of course, right? Um, you can get super crazy with it, and some people pay like, you know, top, top in the world professionals to come out and design their courses. But we have a lot of pros in Michigan that are accessible and completely readily available to be like, if we were like, hey, this is what we're trying to do with this area, right? This is kind of what we have in mind and what we have to work with. Can you come to the spot and, you know, scope it out with us? Give us critiques, help us make it what we want it to be. And we would do that along with, you know, like preliminary tournaments and things like that to get feedback from the public, from people that are playing it and, you know, professionals alike, to kind of make sure that we maximize it before we're putting the things in the ground. Uh, the other big benefit to it is, once you have the cement tee pads in the ground, the baskets aren't the craziest thing to move. So whenever, like, not whatever, but if an issue does come up, uh, you guys had that happen at Goldenrod where we had, there was a issue with disc golfers interfacing with, uh, the equestrian traffic. And there was an issue, and then they asked us about it, and then we moved, you guys moved it, it took you what, an afternoon? That's it. That's all it takes to, to, to alter it, to change it, to, to make sure that you're continuing to make it better. Um, I don't know exactly where all of your guys' lines and everything are, right? Like, I'm aware of like that kind of stuff, I'm like, you know, the mountain bikers, master plans and everything like that. But it can go there, it can go kind of in any of those areas and coexist and, um, you know, there, there's no reason these things can't coexist. And the more recreational activities you have, again, just like they're saying with pump track, the diversity of people that you're bringing in and are likely to bring in when you have that, hey, my three favorite hobbies are there, and oh wait, downtown has a bunch of good restaurants to go eat and drink at afterwards. You're gonna draw a lot of people along with, you know, this being probably, you know, a kid's favorite place to spend their time, right? I have plenty of fond memories at Crampton Park, you know, when I was growing up, right? Um, but it's just one more thing to do there. If you don't have a tennis racket, you can't play tennis. If you don't, you know, and you can go to Walmart or Meyer and go buy a seven dollar frisbee. And you can have fun with that for as long as you want.
Can you go back to that eighteen hole one?
Yep.
Peter, can you explain where that number one is?
Yeah, you were right at the little pump station building on the other side of the tunnel.
Gotcha.
The trim with this plan is seventeen and eighteen, there's no access, that's all fenced off.
Yeah.
Because it's, uh, Old, old, the old sewage treatment. Um, another comment about this particular park, which I do like this spot, and I think this is worth exploring. But this is also a spot when we looked at the expansion of the, of the trail system. Um,
Rodney with Dale.
Yep.
Um, that we were given permission to explore this, uh, as a connection from the bowl through this corridor um, to the tunnel behind the legion, um, which would then connect all those Lincoln Street neighborhoods under that tunnel, pedestrian bridge into the commercial district. So I think it's worth considering how the trail could go through here. And the, the real trip to this is the fact that you're dealing with an unknown landowner Ed and his plans that have changed about fifteen times um, for his laser skating thing. He gave us verbal permission to build trail on that side of the river. Um, because it didn't feel like he was going to be able to use the property because to get to the other side, he would have to build a bridge. And so, um, he liked the idea of recreation drawing more attention to his property. And certainly this would fit with that. But you've got his big unknown and you have holes, which is the other thing. So, um,
No, and I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not tied to this by any means. It was just kind of like, okay, look at what you can do with that amount of space, right?
Right, and this, but this concept, um, I really like this spot in particular because the difference in trying to put these in an existing trail system that was designed specifically based on trail density and water and impact or sensitive natural areas, which disc golf doesn't always jive with, is that this could be a, a chance to start fresh, put the connector trail back to town and design the golf course at the same time.
Yeah.
The other trail is, there's a potential to, to, and there's another property, I think, that we looked at also in the conversation, Rodney, with the row guys.
Pay attention.
Hey, you are being way too loud.
Sorry. So, um, in the conversation with the row guys about disc golf, we mentioned the ability to get a conservation easement, which is a deed restriction, which designate use. And then whoever does a conservation easement, then you release, you have a change in your tax burden because the deed restriction prevents you from developing it in a certain way. And this in particular happens on land that is unusable typically to the developer. So this situation we looked at in several situations. This one included, they could have a conservation easement that would benefit the landowner Ed um, and then benefit the city by a designated use. The same is true with the Polar Palace property, which Dale gave us the contact information to. The property behind there is not buildable. It's low and, uh, and mostly wet. Um, but could be a place that we were given permission to explore as a trail extension. So in that image there, if you were to get permission from Ed and, and work through a conservation easement with Six Rivers or a land donation, some way that benefits him and the city, I think that kind, that kind of concept works well. The other spot that we talked about is starting at the linear path behind CMS, um, which obviously CMS has shifted their focus. They own all that river corridor, which every year during the river cleanup, we pull a massive amount of trash out of that corridor. But that's all owned by CMS. They're not gonna build on it. It's wooded, wetland, it's river corridor. You go from behind CMS along the linear path, and then you pop over pedestrian bridge into East Anbrook, which has no function, um, and has a huge amount of space that could be tweaked for, we probably get five, six. So I, I see that being a spot where you can easily get nine holes starting behind CMS into East Anbrook. So I think thi- this is a different situation for Oakdale than the rest of Oakdale where I don't see that type of compatibility. The spot that you've chosen, um, I think has a lot of potential.
No, and I mean, this is, yeah, yeah. And I think when you and I originally talked, this is kind of what, I guess this is what I had in my head of, you know, what we could mess with.
Here's the other thing, can you go back to that image?
Sorry, I switched the two screens on me. I'm struggling.
You also, you got the ability, I think there's some potential with this that's all city-owned to rate, Ryan, is this it?
That's it.
So this is pretty interesting. And water on both sides. And since there's endless cash flow in the disc golf community, you can easily come up with a pedestrian bridge.
We'll build one. I won't say it's professional, but we'll build one.
Well, Tony said it's gotta be cutting edge.
Fancy.
Blame it on me.
We could build one like they did in the, you know, it's, we could all spec out.
Peter?
All joking aside, um, with this image on the screen, can you tell me where you envision your pump track or is it not even, is that out?
It depends. It's over here.
It's in the north side.
I'm trying to figure it out now.
Okay, so what you're saying now is that this type of a program would not interfere anything that you're wanting to talk to me about?
I think the advantage of a version like this versus, for example, the woods at Oakdale was drawn, redrawn, and redrawn each time to deal with a unique sensitive ecosystem with wooded, wetland, flowers, and a trail system that specifically was designed in regard to trail density and in regard to water flow. And so when you tried to come on top of it with another concept, I think that's a mistake and that wouldn't work in the woods. In this situation, you have the ability, you can get access to land. You have the ability to design from the beginning a connector path that serves as, in a sense, a highway to town for multi-use people and a connection for these Lincoln Street people to pop under that tunnel, cross the ridge, and then they're in the commercial district.
Right.
So you have the ability to have this be transportation and double whammy as access for disc golf, especially if you jump over into this.
Yeah, and a lot of courses are, I mean, the, the flow, right, can be designed that way too. But a lot of courses just kind of have parallel pathing with them, right? Hey, it's getting dark. We gotta get out of here. Okay, let's go that way. And you don't want to walk the direction that people are throwing frisbees, right? Um, that's, you know, if you're already in there clearing things out, clearing brush up, you already have a brush hog rented. That's not a hard ask. And in general, a lot of these are just dirt paths. There's nothing cement or anything you have to worry about, right? Might be a little rough cut right off of the rip once you do that. But I, I mean, I personally went from like, okay, I'm tripping over a couple of little baby stumps to it's nice, padded down, and it's basically a natural mulch because of all of the wildlife that's fallen down and, you know, gotten beaten down with the foot traffic. And then I guess really, just really quick, so we can go through this too. Um, but, uh, when I first reached out to Brent, it was about this because he worked with Dennis County Parks on the Goldenrod one. Um, which the Goldenrod one was described as impossible and something that couldn't be done for what, the last fifteen years? Um, so Brent broke down basically what he did within there. So Brent broke down basically what he did within there. This is the amount of work that went into just that course. The eighteen concrete pads, put in eighteen new baskets, basically clear out the brush, clean it up, make it more accessible and easy to play. That was done over the course of ten months, but it was with, what, probably three or four volunteers versus now we have twenty-seven, give or take a couple.
When was that done?
Last year.
And it, and it was twenty twenty-one and then twenty twenty-two.
Um, and then.
This was all funded by the club also. Dennis County Park just gave us permission for each part of it and then we were able to raise it to tournaments or through donations.
Yep. So, um, so the other benefit of this with Brent being a business owner and owning GMM Telecom is that like the work can be contracted through GMM Telecom so that we, while we're out doing this, have the liability, have all of that while we're utilizing heavy equipment on public land and all, all of that, so that that safety factor is in there.
Ryan, how did, sorry. How does this play into the overall scheme of that land use? I mean.
Which, the line and.
Both. Honestly, and I'm, I'm trying to just think, bigger, biggest of sky, let's just dream for a moment. If we were, the, the land that we're utilizing with the trails and the bike trails and the, well, the proposed, the line thing and the pump track, if we did that and we were looking at an eighteen hole in that same area, is that land sort of designated as an entertainment park area already? Rodney, Ryan?
So the pump track, not the pump track, but the line and the bowl is west of the area we're talking about. It would be across the north-south pathway going east towards the tunnel, which you can't, towards, towards Kohl's.
Well, okay.
So.
I'm sorry.
His area is an ideal, which is just overgrown, nonusable, autumn olive, heavy brush, heavy dense cover for deer and wildlife. But what Peter was saying is it would, the, the subtle development of that area would open up the eastern, eastern movement to that tunnel behind the American Legion, potentially bringing people from the north under the railroad tracks over to Kohl's, over to Myers.
Which consequently increases the walkability and.
Oh, for sure. And, and, and then also.
Commerce and so on and so forth within the city.
Right. Been talking about that tunnel, Tony, for twenty years, easily. And there's massive potential back there. Not this way, the direction, the, the thing that we're talking about, your jump line that you just mentioned.
Yeah.
Is here.
Okay.
So this goes, all the rest of the trail system is this way.
Yep.
We're talking about going east and this is as laser skating.
That's, that's probably right.
Laser skate, there's Kohl's, that's sort of the way.
That area would, would be so beneficial to be able to get people back there and get, it opened up somewhat developed to get eastern movement to.
And in.
Those areas.
And in theory, it could also benefit Ed in his future business of an event center.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, being in the back garden, basically, yeah.
It'd be right out the back door of, of potential golf course pathways.
Sure, he recognizes that.
But I don't know.
And he can't use it. He basically can't use that property.
Because it's on, it's, it's low, it's heavily dense, it's, you know, when we consider putting a pathway through there, we had to study numerous, numerous boardwalks you would have to go over low areas. But if it was laid out, right, you could go around the lawyers or over the lawyers with this golf.
Do we have any normally designed, because we get, like, you guys would have, what property we actually have for East Two and, you know, kind of like where we can use and then we go out and walk the property and bring in professionals, you know, so nothing's set still until, you know, this guy says, oh, we don't really want you here for whatever you just want to, you know, we're, we're super flexible with what property we're using.
Yeah, this, this is just more or less like, okay, that's what, in my opinion, that could be, just that space alone, even if we're talking about going closer to the, like drainage pond over there and everything else there, like that, you, you could fit a top-tier course all within that space.
The other benefit to Ed in, in support of, again, this is back to a conversation that Rodney and I had, we met Ed at Economic Development Corporation to type, kind of talk through how did the development could be mutually beneficial before disc golf even entered in this situation in regard to, this is the beginning of the National Water Trail, so this is an official canoe launch, but it's hard to access because you're parking here and dragging your boat. And it was the best we could do and Farmer's Creek is a seasonal paddle because of the four dams upstream. So the best time to paddle Farmer's Creek is October to April, not the traditional season because of that lowering the dams in Lake Apire. The reason that that benefits Ed then is if he were to put parking here that could be justifiably supported by city recreation and Tifa and whatever, it allows him to meet a requirements for parking that then could be supported by these other recreational opportunities through the community funding sources in addition to the magical funds of disc golf. This is a, a conversation that definitely Ed should be.
Of course.
Of course, because basically right now he's wigging out. About cost and whether we can pull this off and.
Sure.
And all of that. So his plan, again, like the rest of us, where are people going for that type of entertainment? They're running south and he's trying to capture, like the disc golf, like the rest of us, trying to capture and keep our people close by giving them super good access.
Well, I like the idea, I mean, it excites me that this was all to come to fruition, that all three of those projects would be local, that you get tired of playing disc golf and I'm gonna go to the pump track to get my workout, then I'm gonna go over to my line. They're all right there without, very easy walking distance.
If I'm too hot, I'm gonna go get on my paddleboard and fall in the river, you know.
That you could see then, I mean, Myers, Rovers, all those, all those outlets, commercial outlets right there are gonna benefit.
I agree. It has, it has a metal park field.
It's a hundred degrees and I'm tired of, you know, riding my bike on the pump track. I'm gonna roller skate up to Myers, grab water.
And it looks good to the community where they, even if someone just went to the pump track, they see these other development things, even if they, they're not.
Well, and to go with his comment is, because I totally agree, that whatever we do, you do it with excellence. You know, if you're gonna go mediocre, I don't want to see any of this stuff. I mean, it's, it's to say, because it comes back to ultimately, the city is gonna have to be the one that's going to be having to cough up the funds to ultimately maintain this stuff. I like the idea that you guys are self-maintaining, but it's, but it's a golf course, I mean, that's, that, that's not, you know, there's not a lot of maintenance to it because we're gonna be cutting the grass already anyway.
Well.
But on your stuff.
I would argue that the model that we've created with Oakdale, having personally putting fifty hours of mowing some of these seasons.
Right.
On a donated mower with a, an army of people coming behind me with weed whips and everything with leaf blowers and with the little bushwhackers, I don't think it would be unreasonable for us to consider taking care of the maintenance ourselves with, you know, if, if the, if the smack talk is real.
Right.
Volunteers stepping up, which obviously we're, we're looking at their track record, there is the potential for this not to be a city maintained. It still could be city-owned, we could generate funds to purchase this property back from Ed or do an easement, but that doesn't necessitate city maintenance.
Because I don't want to see Rodney having to be riding a lawnmower.
He's a cowboy.
I'd take him.
He can do a yard all the time.
He's out there already, but, I mean, that, those are just, I mean, I, I'm digging on this concept stuff. I like it.
I do.
And, and I do like the idea that I would much prefer personally, being selfish, I would much prefer seeing if this was all to go forward, all of those in that one designated area because you're gonna draw your traffic there. I wish we'd start doing something on the east side of the city because the south and the west side's got a lot of attention. The east side of the city honestly, I think, needs attention if the pier is gonna continue to try to grow as a community. One thing I'm curious, and I don't see it, I haven't seen it, is what is the potential cost for an eighteen hole?
And I'm thinking back that a little bit too. I don't think it would be a bad idea to do this. I like the idea of that. Crampton Park one, especially, that one could even be done, like.
Is that Crampton Park one?
That could be done like.
Yeah.
Next week.
Yeah.
There's no clearing. I'm just saying, that one is more.
Just kidding there.
With that being a wetland and environmental or a habitat for wildlife, do we have any additional DNR things that we need to be concerned with, with utilizing that area? Because there's also a river that goes through.
So I think it's if you disrupt more than one acre of soil within five hundred feet of the river. In this place, they're clearcutting with, with.
Like a brush hog.
Autumn olive and things like that. They're not pulling topsoil out, they're not adding aggregate, so there's no pluses and minuses on that.
The most soil that would get moved is to dig for the tee pads, so you're going down, what, like six inches and it's generally like three foot five.
And, and for the ease of maintenance and everything, we use natural fallings into the trees, so, you know, if there's one tree that'll clear a fairway, we take that instead of going, oh, we'll clear these seventy trees and just like.
A knows bowl over there.
Wouldn't call them trees back there. It's scrub, it's scorched apple, it's hawthorn, it's autumn olive. Until you get to Kohl's and what you're not looking at, you might want to get on Google Maps, is what Marty just brought up, the point, is that past the tunnel, there is a huge additional chunk of elevated, non-wet stuff behind Home Depot that is high and dry and actually does have some woods, some mature, there's a couple of sycamores and cottonwoods and then there's a beast. So that chunk of property, again, is not buildable, it is not accessible, it's just not accessible.
But it could play into.
Oh, absolutely.
Development.
Yeah, so it's another chunk that could be connected to make this, because you, you don't have access on that seventeen, eighteen to that Oakdale sewage. So you're gonna lose a little bit, but you can gain by jumping the river and continuing east behind Home Depot.
So, open fields, so what we're talking about with, um, twenty-three fifty a hole, open holes are the easiest, right? So then that's the same with you, six hundred and fifty dollars for two cement tee pads, so it's a nine-hole course, now you have two different ways that you can play it, right? So just doing it with excellence, right? Planning ahead, trying to have enough funds for everything, right? Four hundred and fifty dollars a basket, that's everything you need to get it in the ground and you're good to go. And that's the top tier, it's gonna allow, the baskets are good for like twenty-plus years. Brush clearing and tall grass maintenance, you guys already maintain it, so we actually don't, you know, that's something that we probably wouldn't need there, maybe a little bit, but I really kind of highly doubt it, it would probably just be like on a volunteer basis of, like Brent's talking about of, okay, this is kind of what we're trying to do, maybe we need to take down this limb and this limb and then that's it. Yep, yep. Um, and then equipment rental, five hundred dollars, just kind of divided up, but I mean.
You're trying to maximize.
Yeah, yeah, we tried to look at it as, okay, this is the absolute worst-case scenario that you could be looking at, but like I said, Crampton's kind of a good example of this. Some of this stuff doesn't, isn't even actually applicable in that scenario. And then looking at lightly wooded, so again, a little bit of, a little bit of clearing and stuff, about twenty-six hundred a hole, that's, that's the thing, unless you're really like coming with construction equipment and trying to clear out like a, like an Amazon logging operation, it's not like a massive amount of movement, so it's really this, the equipment to get the cement tee pads in there, like volunteer labor hours and a basket and you, you know, you have your, everything ready for you.
So maybe eighteen thousand dollars for a nine-hole course at Crampton. There, there's totals on the low.
Yeah.
And that would be, that would be high. We did Goldenrod, which was replacing tee pads, replacing baskets, and we had fourteen hundred man-hours and spent two thousand dollars on equipment rental and our total cost was sixteen thousand.
But that's already an, already laid-out course.
Yeah, yeah.
You were redoing.
Upgrading.
Yeah.
Yeah, the parks were pretty specific about, they wanted everything.
And Crampton would only be nine?
Correct. Well, yeah, but we had minimum clear of it. Goldenrod, that would be the difference, so it'll be pretty.
So I have a question on the nine-hole, it must be at Crampton, because a lot of big activities will happen in that park and, which hopefully they would go in the east, not that I'm against, I like that idea, but how does that affect some of the other activities that we need to take into consideration for the park?
So that app that I was talking about earlier has a status condition, right? And you see it on a regular basis, if someone goes there and plays and you have a birthday party going on or you have something like that, someone's gonna put in there, hey, just so you guys know, uh, birthday party's going on today, like go play somewhere else today. Or just only play these holes to avoid them, right? Just common courtesy of.
Can you post on the app like, hey, this is a special event?
Yeah, and you can, yeah, you can do it, yeah. I mean, do I have. Can we do it? Yep. Exactly. One, yeah, there's plenty of, uh.
I did notice though, there's a little map there, when you're finishing on the east side, west side of the park, it's that open field area and, you know, the pavilion, they have arenas, they're in that pavilion, you had nothing around there.
No, no, I tried to avoid all that.
Nine was ending kind of west of the pavilion or something.
Yep, and then you kind of end and you can get to the cement and walk back to your car over in the other parking lot.
Yeah, I really don't think, I don't think it interfered too much, you know, obviously you have to have tennis courts, nobody even goes back there, along the river's edge, high face back there.
So watch out for discs.
So what are the totals that you guys had estimated for the two courses in eighteen for the nine?
And this is again, overestimating everything, right? Obviously we have to do the walks and say like, this is the, that, but that was our range, I would say we're on a nine-hole course in Crampton, we're really looking at the minimum end of it. Uh, I mean, I think you.
We're talking like.
High in the hundred range for both of them.
Correct. And we're talking, well, labor? Right, so all, all the labor for clearing and like installing the course would be from us and then the maintenance of the actual like lanes, so you guys can still be mowing whatever, or if the hands are out there on these properties or that would be installed would be, you know, the county, but as far as maintaining the actual course and the, the lanes and fairways and tee pads and signs.
But in a heavily wooded area, you don't have a own captain coming and take down all the autumn olive to make lanes and.
No, we would do that as well. That's why we put, that's why we put like the equipment rental and then, and there and everything. We, we know, we know it's a lot.
The cooperative and basic species management people, they could sometimes get out and help us in the rest of it.
Normally we walk with our cultrists, you know, somebody who knows canopy maintenance and makes things.
I like, uh, funding purposes, like, okay, it's a dark park, let's go back to that, just not even that. The group raised all this money, eventually it was city funds, right? We were kind of like the general contractors, we hired the workers and got the quotes and things like that. So would this be like a reimbursement thing or would we kick the country and we pay for rentals and, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We'd be flexible on however.
Yeah, whatever works for you guys is best, right? We're just kind of waiting for the, yes, this is a good area, where do we draw the lines of the sand with the, you know, talking with that gentleman Ed and all of that, getting all of that good, okay, once we have kind of that decided. Once we have kind of that decided, now it's, okay, we get all of the right people, meet at the trail, let's go walk it and kinda talk through this. Print out a couple of Google Maps so we can mark it up, draw it, take it notes and kind of plan from there and, you know, get it all where we need it.
Because this is another, because this, would this be considered a new park? And would that then fall under a new project for grant funding?
I would, I would say, I mean, like the.
We're taking, we're taking, well, no, that was using an existing park.
True.
So this is taking unused, undeveloped, undevelopable land to create a park or sports thing. So would that open up grant funding from some of the other?
Legal writing deeds that we could have that land used, donated or, you know what I'm saying? If it was Ed's property or otherwise, if we could have that legal description that the city could do the grant.
So it'd have to be city property, right?
It would have to be city.
That is the only part of that property though that is not city, correct?
Going east, all of that behind, the north of the river, it's all privately.
That's all Ed. No, that's all.
Ed Coles.
Ed and Coles, can we pull up that map, Dean, just so we can look at that? Just go on Google Maps and switch this screen view. You don't have Wi-Fi?
No, not in here, no. So the city owns, so you see where the pond is, Tony, right there? The city owns that north-south line at the left of that.
Turn both my phones off to him.
Everything you see there, so two eighteen seventeen four, we all city owns.
This is the line.
That's the line of Ed's property and what the city owns.
Sixteen five going east, that's all. How far back is Ed's home?
All the way to.
To the trail. It's about twenty acres back there.
What's that?
It's around twenty acres.
So everything between DeMille and the railroad tracks to the west of Coles, is it? I know this isn't oriented north-south, but. I know.
Something to just throw in the conversation, that old treatment plant really needs to be dealt with. It needs to be there. I mean, it's pretty messy.
It's the old treatment.
It's why it's.
Freezing plant.
There's a stove, there's a pantry.
There might be a grant for that.
Yeah.
I know it's built very well. I kind of agree.
Does it cost money then? Then they didn't have the money, they got mine.
In terms of, I just wanna say something supportive of the Crampton Park mini-concept based on playing a million rounds of disc golf at the camp with fourth graders. Here's how kids play. They throw the disc and they run. They run, they'll run the whole course. So that also lends to a pretty unique angle of fitness and exercise that's, I think, really surprising. They just get so excited from hole to hole to hole. I really see the Crampton accessibility. Obviously, the vision needs to be tweaked, your one hole went right across the pavilion there on the east side. But the concept on a small scale, and Rodney, this is part of your question, how it has to be even a small par-three hole is really satisfying when you throw in that water element.
Especially the younger user.
I really like the young and beginner element at Crampton.
Well, and that's, that's the thing too, is like, they all have a blast, but just because it's short doesn't mean I'm not gonna have a blast. I don't really know.
So, you know, I think, yeah, I think we got a good grasp of what we'd like to do here. You know, now it's just, we need to come up with a memo that I'll submit to the commission on what we want to do.
I mean, it could be such thing as you could have a small little introductory one at Crampton.
Right.
And then, I mean, this other one, if it all comes to fruition, by the railroad tracks. But that's time, it's gonna take time to get that one.
Yep.
And that to me is.
But that was kinda like, caught here was, are you proposing two courses? Small.
Yep.
Start with the small ones, we can get a second big one.
I mean, if we have funding, when the ground's not frozen anymore, we could get it in the ground. Especially at Crampton, wouldn't take long at all. Obviously, we'd have to come back, say, everybody sign off, yep, this is safe, we agree, this functions with the current park functions, everybody's happy with it. We've walked it off on the ground and then it's just a matter of, okay, week four, we go out and we spray paint on the ground, on the grass where we wanna put the stuff, we get one final thumbs up and then we just have a volunteer weekend and get it knocked out.
Do you have a particular company that you, that you just from? Cause I understand, I think there's a company, well, I think there's a company here that, when I'm just a park, that makes that, and maybe we can get that on board for some sponsorships.
Um, I'm, I mean, we would go probably through Discraft, which is in Wicksum, or MBP that's in Marlette. But I would probably say we're gonna lean, because they're really, really heavily back all of the, the youth efforts and the, just getting new people involved, right? So like, if we're like, we write them a formal letter that says, hey, this is what we're doing, this is why, we wanna get young people involved, this is our first park, this is our first snap at it, here's kind of what's been presented to us. I wouldn't be surprised if they sent us like a hundred, two hundred discs, something like that. So someone like Brent and myself can come in, we advertise the community today and say, hey, we have this new park opening and Brent and I are standing there teaching and just giving them out. Just, here you go, here's your first disc, you know. Write your name and number on the back of it in case you lose it, someone will return it to you and, you know, go have fun.
I know we got, I know we got the word set.
Okay.
First name on the word set.
Yeah.
Kid named Joel Shepherd.
Oh, no, I thought you were saying Josiah. Me and him are good buddies, I will have you know.
I don't know, just that.
Yeah. But we try to do like a loaded disc thing in some of these communities. We load like fifty of them there and it says, returning your dog, you are throwing the wood.
If I could get you a, four dollars to me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sweet, that'll help me put stuff together.
Dean, this is where you stop. Look at all this.
You prefer.
Tunnel.
Wait, where's my house? Right there, there's the tiki bar.
We need to connect the tiki bar to.
There's the tunnel.
Our grandpa's in the country and all through railroad tracks.
So that's on the north side of the river. The south of.
You know that, actually, I should be asking Ryan, was there, what kind of trajectory is this new path gonna have from the tunnel?
Not, not much down, a couple hundred feet is all west of.
Have you got a concept of what you're gonna do?
Yeah, it's all drawn, everything's all drawn up, we're just waiting on the hit property, which just happened this week.
So is it gonna go along the right way and along?
Nope, the trail, it's gonna be a switchback trail of twenty-four heading west, a couple hundred feet down to the river, then back through the tre, the tunnel, into Crampton Park. That's it. It has to be six percent of that, right?
But what about on the, I mean.
Nothing's gonna do it, right?
Just gets you back to the sidewalk.
Yeah, nothing right now, it's, it's gonna get you safely into the park instead of having to cross up that twenty-one, twenty-four. We did study, we did the studies, we walked the whole. We walked from basically where hole one was, all the way along the railroad tracks, all under the tunnel, behind all that property. It wasn't feasible, because most of that would require a boardwalk, very expensive. So then we shifted to this switchback trail concept to get you safely under, from the west side of the road to the east side without having to cross the street. And then, as I mentioned, we was talking about hole number eight, nine. It basically would be a fork coming out of the tunnel. One went along the river to the, to the Quonix Bridge, a paved pathway, and then another paved pathway kinda along the edge of the hill leading up to around the north side of the playground, there's a trail that ends there.
It's in the master plan, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, they've drawn it down for like four years. But not to say that in the future, that could extend out. This would require some, but we had people's houses and public.
The back of the houses on Pleasant Street.
Yep.
Yeah.
Public tiki.
Charging machine.
Can I just say, one more thing that is totally off topic, please forgive me, but this, you guys might not realize this. Mayfield Township just got this.
Who did? Oh, we're all great.
Mayfield Township.
Really?
It's in your master plan.
So what?
Boom, boom, boom. That's also something we talked about, access to nature twenty years ago. It's now in public.
So the tunnel at the hospital, twenty-four by the Fairland Gate, which is fenced off right now.
Is that on that match? The tunnel's right here, okay, gotcha.
They just fenced that off.
Goes into road.
And that would go up to Davis Lake Road, back over to Suncrest.
Just something to think about, it's not fair game.
Have developed, I am, the first objective was to paint the park.
It was, it was just, it was just deeded or is in the process of being deeded to Mayfield Township as we speed. And with Dan Eagleman and I, you know, we worked together and he came to me as soon as he knew that they had acquired that and wanted to know what it would take, you know, as far as a trail system. And I said, well, you know, I know there's a lot of grants out there and a lot of stuff going on in that city area. I said, you know, with that section, it's already clear, you know, because the, I think DTE actually maintains that because they have a power line down that. The only thing that's not clear is right by Davis Lake Road because they deliberately have not cleared that out to keep traffic off of that, that spot. So on an effort, it would take would be minimal, as far as unless you paid it, I mean, if you did a brush line or whatever, that would be, that could be very easily turned into more learning track. But I do know that, speaking of the supervisor, Dean, he's very open to working with you guys or whatever, or doing it themselves, or he, he just, because I'm praying for a cause and everything else, he said, you know, what is, would be the interest in that? And I said, well, that's huge. I mean, anytime we can get another quarter mile section of that trailway going northwest is, that's just another step in that direction for the community. But yeah, that, that just recently happened, so.
Well, our purpose was to discuss what was proposed and what we were going to recommend back to the city.
Yeah, so from my understanding from this meeting, we're gonna go back to the commission and say we, we support the pump track and the disc golf. And then, I don't know, I mean, it's not really.
Recommendation to the commission.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's actually up to us to decide, hey, you could give this money, that money. It's up to the commission.
No, but we need to.
But it is a recommendation from the board, so I would like to, I'd like to make the motion that we support. I haven't even gotten it out yet.
You will.
I'd like to make the motion to support both of these projects. Both this golf course. I think we need to get one probably with Crampton Park right away and then figure out how we can partner with, with the pump track, which is obviously gonna cost more money, but.
Yep.
They have more resources in that area and we can do something excellent in both areas.
Yep, and really the pump track to get going, we need, we need the ten thousand.
That's my question, I want support both, probably third of the money, disc golf, the other two-thirds to the pump track.
Was our motion just to support the projects?
Recommend the projects.
Cause really the purpose of the meeting was just to.
That's our motion.
What kind of projects?
Those two.
And both disc golf.
So one-third of the current marijuana funds that we have right now, I don't know what the funds are gonna be when we actually.
I don't know if this motion needs to talk about money because we're just supporting projects, right?
I'm just saying one-third, not necessarily the whatever.
Let's just proceed with the investigation, we're looking into proceeding with these two projects.
Three.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't think this meeting was to say, hey, put one-third of the money, put this, put that. I think the purpose of the meeting was to support the projects, right?
Well, I think we need to know what direction, and this is the only time I get to make the motion. She really wanted to do this, right?
Well, I didn't say that's why I knew it my way, because I don't wanna come back and have this for meeting, just to make.
No, the, the request from the city commission was that we, the park board meet and come with a recommendation on how best to use or which project they wanted to see funded. Now, our recommendation is both, the two. And however the commission wants to fund it, we'll just, we'll figure that out. But the recommendation of the park is.
Or.
That we wanna see both of these move forward. What do you, you're the one who made that motion.
No, I wanted, I wanted to be specific.
Yeah, but.
I guess we can.
I was at that meeting.
I'll let that go.
We're at the hundred, we got some work all of that.
We'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, even like, I mean, we don't really, I don't think this coordinator has the power to say, you get this money, you get that.
No, the recommendation is that both, these two projects are the ones that we support and would like to move forward with. Now, commission, you figure it out.
Do we have a second to the motion?
What?
Marty did say Ash, or Jeff, who wants to say?
Oh, Marty wants to say.
Marty did.
Who wants their name in there? All right, and then all in favor? All right.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm going to be adjourned.
Motion passes, we'll send our notes to the commission for the next meeting.
Thank you for everybody to be here this time.
Thank you, love, we're tied, I'm excited to.
It is greatly true.
Tell Lupier.
We need you for a year.
Hey, can I say something real quick? What he, what he brought up earlier.
He's my kid, Rodney.
Peter and I grew up here fifty-plus years, but I think it's really awesome. Over my lifetime, I've seen a lot of kids move out and everything else. Right now, over the last few years, I'm really starting to feel that Lupier is starting to come together again. And it's, it's very inspiring.